And we're live. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 7th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. We are meeting in a hybrid meeting this evening. Joe Mignani, one of our Select Board members, is remote, and we are just coming in from executive session. So I will call the open meeting to order at 7:01. Tonight, we are being broadcast and recorded by WACA TV. And I would ask that anyone that is participating remotely and would like to do so, to please use the raise hand function on Zoom. And identify yourself as well. Thank you, Yomanda. So let's go ahead and move forward with citizens' participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? I see Mark DeSoni. Mark, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoni, 49 Hawthorne Road. Everybody doing well so far?
Hey, Mark. We're good. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Everybody's at the table except for Mr. Mignani. Must have been a bad boy.
No. Just taking extra precautions, Mark.
Oh, okay. In two, in about, on two days, the Public Safety Bill is supposed to be opening. Is that still on schedule?
We will, we'll be talking more about the timeline a little bit later on, but we are getting very, very close, Mark.
Okay, want to make sure that all the fireworks and the crowds are all happy and seeing what there is. And we're not really much as other than just saying everything else. This house is all set. And we're happy, and my dad's getting better, and we're all doing good, and this town is staying quiet and behaving. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else that would like to participate tonight? Seeing none, we will move on into the agenda. We have a few minutes before our first scheduled appointment. So I would say if we want to move to the consent agenda, to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written on our agendas.
Second.
Roll call vote. Greaves, aye.
Mitchell, aye.
Chair, aye.
Mignani, aye.
Kinsman, aye. That passes five zero. So I know that we are a few minutes early, but I do see Helen Nicole here remotely here on Zoom. Hi, Helen. So our first order of business tonight is to discuss the demolition delay bylaw for historically or architecturally significant buildings. Helen had sent us some, the demo bylaw with some red lines that she wanted us to take a look at. Helen, I'll turn it over to you, and you can go ahead.
Sure, thank you for having me. So basically, what I wanted to do is kind of go through the changes that we made. Now, these are changes not only to the bylaw, but there are also changes from the original warrant that was sponsored at the fall, at the Spring Town Meeting, I'm sorry. And so we, our working group, the Save the Mill Buildings, which is now Save Historic Ashland, working group went through because there were so many concerns at a town meeting about some of the things in that original warrant that we decided to try and address those while still continuing to move forward, hopefully with another warrant article, you know, to add a little bit of teeth to the historic, to the demolition delay bylaw. So we have five changes now, and I know I sent you the copy. So the first one is Section 125.2 Procedures. Now, originally in the warrant that we had gone forward within the spring, we were trying to go for the 50-year rule, which is kind of a well-used rule that there is a lot of places that use the 50-year rule. And I know there were a lot of concerns expressed at town meeting. People seemed to be concerned, for some reason, that 1950s ranches would actually have to be considered as historic, which really wouldn't have been the case, but I understand the concern, and we addressed that. And what we did was we changed it. Instead of using the 50-year rule, we went to a 70-year prior rule as opposed to the 50-year rule because we thought it still really needed. And what it really does, what I really liked about it, is that it's a continuously updating thing. So in other words, there isn't going to be a time or a year that will go by that this particular bylaw won't update itself. It will always be continuously updating. So at some point in the future, somebody won't have to go back and say, well, gee, 1940 is now 200 years ago. You know, we could update this. This will always be updated. So we really liked that change and thought we wanted to keep it in the respect of being a self-updating thing. So we moved it up 20 years, and we put it in as a 70-year rule. And we, and you'll see that it's, we scratched it out wherever the 1940, January 1st, 1940 date was. We put in the 70-year rule. And then in the same section, we made another change. And this change was we actually added five days, five working days for the Historic Commission to hold public hearings to make determinations on historic significance of buildings, which we kind of did as a, as a, just an added sort of benefit for them to have time to take additional time when needed to do more research or to look into applications that are coming in. And we thought that would be a benefit for them. That wasn't actually addressed in the last warrant article that we had done. So this was something new that we decided to put in this time. And then in the last thing in that same section, it's number seven in Section 125.2. And that is the nine-month delay. We increased to a 12-month delay as opposed to, in the original warrant article, when we were trying to change it for 12 months for anything up to 100 years old and 24 months for anything over 100 years old. We just left it at a straight 12-month delay period change, and we left it right there with that. And then we moved on. The next section we have is, I believe, 125.5 Enforcements. We scratched out a large area, so I don't know how familiar you are with that original warrant. There was one area, and there was a lot of concern. I know I talked with Mike Lurbert about it. And I think a few other people had expressed concerns about it, so we scratched that out entirely. We decided not to move forward with that in this warrant article. And we went, we originally had, the original bylaw has a two-year timeframe. So for instance, if someone violates the demolition delay bylaw and takes a building down in violation of the bylaw, there is currently a two-year period with which they cannot be granted a building permit. We have moved that up to three years. Again, adding a little bit of tooth to the bylaw, but not going quite as far as what we had in the fall with all the additional language that we took out. And that was the fourth change. And then the fifth change was, again, it was another strikeout, basically. It was in 125-9 Definitions. And it's a strikeout for further, it was for clarity about historic features of buildings. We struck that out completely. And, let's see, I'm trying to make sure I'm covering everything. Yeah, so we put, yeah, it was just a complete strikeout of that. So there wasn't really anything further in that section, and that was it. So those were the changes that we had decided to hopefully move forward with the warrant article for this fall's town meeting. And I really am hoping to get feedback on what everyone thinks. So we'll kind of know going forward what to expect from, you know, people with concerns or if people are feeling that this is a good option, adds some teeth to it. Doesn't really take it as far as the last one did. So I guess I'm questioning what you think.
So thank you very much, Helen. I appreciate your going through all that with us. Quick point of clarification. So is this going to be a citizens' petition? Or is this coming through the Historical Commission?
So I was going to get to that next. So I, you know, I really want the Historical Commission to sponsor this, and I'm hoping to get it on to their next agenda. I have asked, actually. And, but, because they haven't been able to get a quorum last month. We were not, we were supposed to discuss this last month. We weren't able to. So my thought is, because I'm not the kind of person that likes to count their eggs before they hatch, is that I would like the Historic Commission to sponsor this. But I'd also, just in case, because you don't know what's going to happen, I would like to put a warrant article marker as a citizens' petition, just in case we can't get it sponsored by the Historic Commission.
So Michael just asked if potentially the Select Board might feel comfortable sponsoring it. So.
As a backup.
As a backup. So.
That would be great.
Yep. So before we get to that point, just, Steve, go ahead.
So Helen, I'm a little, just clarify a little bit. You keep saying "we", "we came up with this", "we did that". So who is the "we" that you're referring to?
So the "we" is my work, it's a working group. So it's a group of people that got together after Spring Town Meeting through my online Historic Preservation Group, Save the Mill Buildings, which is now Save Historic Ashland. We changed the name September 1st. And so we put together a group of people, and we met over the summer, late spring and through the summer, to come up with the changes. So we met once a month. So when I say "we", I'm referring to a small group of people from Historic Preservation Group.
Okay. I see Mrs. Gon Friday on the screen as well, and she raised her hand. So I'm assuming Joan was involved. But, and later on in our agenda, both of you are up for an appointment on the Historical Commission, so.
We just, we just appointed them in our consent agenda. So they're official. So you're officially.
So you are appointed, so there's no reason, no reason why you can't get a quorum together, right?
That's what I'm hoping, yes.
So, yeah, you know, from my perspective, ideally, it would be great for the Historical Commission to sponsor this. I think that would be the appropriate entity. Certainly don't disagree with your backup plan. But that's where I would encourage you to, you know, have the sponsorship.
I totally agree. I totally agree. I just wanted the backup plan because you just never know.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I think it's a much stronger, you know, it presents as a stronger supporting presence being done, being done by the Historic Commission, and I agree with that.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Yomanda. So Helen, thank you for bringing this forward. I had a couple of questions about some of the things on here. And part of it's, I'm not as familiar with this bylaw as you are and some of the people working on it. I had a question in regards to the change that was made in 125.2, Section 5, where the Commission shall hold a public hearing within 25 working days of the determination of significance. And then in Section 4 of 125, I'm sorry, that was 125.3. And then in Section.
That was 125.2.
Nope. 125.3. Oh.
Number five.
Number five.
Yeah, but 125.3 doesn't have a number five.
Right. Okay, so mine must be out of order. Anyway, so in 125.2, number five, it's 25 working days. In 125.2, number four, it says, "Within 20 working days, the Commission shall make a determination". And my question is, the 20 working days in Section 4 and the 25 working days in Section 5, are they simultaneous or are they in order? So the 20 days and then the 25 afterwards?
So that's probably my fault. So when we went through this, I didn't really strike that one out and change it. That should be, it should be the same. It's the same. It's upon making a determination that the building is historically significant, which is the same thing. So I would change that to 25.
Okay, but those two things are happening at the same time?
Yeah.
No. Michael's saying no.
No?
No. So what you're referring to is on number four.
Yep.
So that is when the, the Commission, the Commission has to make, once they receive the application for a demolition permit, they need to make first a determination of architectural and/or historical significance. So they have to make that determination first, take that vote first.
Okay, because it also seems like Section 4 is not complete. At least in the copy of the agenda of our doc, of our backup. I'm reading, "Within 20 working days after receipt of the application for a demolition permit by the Commission, the Commission shall make a determination of architectural and/or historical significance upon determination by the Commission that the building", and that's all I have. So that will need to be cleaned up.
Oh, I have more than that. Wait a second. Upon determination, the Commission, that the building is not architecturally and/or historically significant, the Commission shall notify the Inspector of Buildings in writing upon receipt of such notification after the expiration of 20 working days. See, I'm confused because they sound the same, except that I thought what we were changing was, I thought what we were changing was the date to make the determine for architectural.
Okay, so we need to, we need to make sure that this is cleaned up.
I'm kind of confused what's the difference here.
So once the Commission makes a determination.
Yep.
So they have 20 days after they get receipt of the letter from the Building Commissioner. They have to take that vote.
Okay.
For 20 working days, whether that building is architecturally and/or historically significant.
Okay.
First of all, I would recommend changing that to 20.
To 25. Okay, so that all of, everything is 25 working days.
So after the Commission takes that vote, then they have 20 days, and it's being proposed to be 25 days, to take a vote as to whether that building should be preferentially preserved, meaning a demo delay.
Okay. So they are two different things, and they should both be 25 days. And it's, it's not simultaneous, it's one after the other. Couldn't curve it.
What's the deadline for the public hearing, though? How does that work into this? You've got another 25 days to hold a public hearing?
That's to determine whether the building should be preferentially preserved. That's that second vote.
Oh, the second, that's the same as the second vote.
Okay.
So once the first vote happens, then that starts the clock on the, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So I would give the Commission, I would suggest, under number four, again, you increase that from 20 working days to 25. And that gives the Commission a little bit of breathing room.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Right, because depending on when the application comes in, if they're only meeting once a month, that kind of thing. Okay. Okay, that clarified that for me.
I agree with that.
At first, I was a little hesitant about the three years, if they demolish the building when they're not supposed to. But in second, in hindsight, I'm like, yeah, you should not be able to take a financial gain within three years, so. And I like that you're staying with the 12 months rather than trying to extend that in Section 7. So, yeah. Yeah, I like the changes. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying and bringing it forward again. I think it makes sense.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate, I actually appreciate hearing your support for these changes, so that's great.
So we're, I think Rob has some questions, too.
Michael, did you want to go?
Well, yeah, I just had a couple of things. First of all, Helen, I wanted to make sure that you've got, you've changed it from nine months to 12 months under number seven, correct?
Yes.
But if you go on to the next page, under eight, Section B, where it says, "The Commission is satisfied for at least nine months. The owner has made continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts", did you mean to make that 12 as well?
Under Section 125.8?
125.8, subsection B. It's on the next.
For some reason, I'm missing that.
I don't have that either.
I don't have it either.
"Commission is satisfied that at least nine months, the owner has made continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts to locate a purchaser, to preserve, rehabilitate."
Oh, I was, sorry, Helen, it's actually 125-3, Section 8.
I don't have 125-3, Section 8 either. I have a paragraph for that. I don't know, is there?
Okay, did you want, did you mean?
Feel like we need to clean this document up.
So the section where it says, "The Commission is satisfied for at least nine months, the owner has made continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts to locate a purchaser, to preserve, rehabilitate, or restore the subject building", and that such efforts have been.
That would be 12 months, yeah.
And then the only other thing I would have a suggestion for is to help come up with a definition of what reasonable efforts means. And I'd be happy to help work with you on that.
Okay.
Just because that's, there could be several loopholes.
Well, I agree with that, so I think that's a good idea, actually.
Okay.
And actually, I think that, you know, maybe I'll try to talk to you. Trying to think of my week this week. I have a busy week. Maybe I can talk to you at the beginning of next week, and we could kind of just go over what your idea for that is because I know this time is running short for the, you know, I want to, I want to have it completed so that the Historic Commission can take it up. And so I'd like to, I know their next meeting is later this month, so I'd like to have it completed if I can.
Sure.
One last thing. Would it be good to have Lisa look at it so that makes sure everything makes sense? Okay.
Say, once kind of the language and the intent of the language is put together, we could have Lisa.
Right, I feel like, because I, at least the copy I'm looking at, I feel like we're missing things, and it's not complete, so.
Yeah, I think, well, one thing, yeah, Helen and group, thanks for putting this together and continuing to work on this. I think we do, you know, this is something Historic Commission members should go over in detail and make sure, of course, that we're, they're all in agreement on, especially some of these details. But I think that the good news here tonight is that you seem to have kind of a consensus of opinion about at least the major changes that you want to make, and hopefully you get the technical details. I think, Michael, how much time do they actually have to kind of finish the details on this? It's not September 30th. We already have, that's just the deadline for the warrant.
Yeah, that, I mean, for the notice of intent to be filed, I believe that's what it is. So the board is scheduled to vote to close and post the warrant, I believe it's on October 18th.
Yes.
And, just make sure, October 19th, excuse me.
So there's a little bit of time to kind of get these. And I would encourage that Historic Commission as a whole meet and really go over this. The only, and Helen, the only other question I kind of had in kind of big picture was, how did you settle on the 70 years? And is there, I mean, other than just kind of.
Well, it was a group discussion, and it went on for a little bit. We had some different ideas and some agreements and some disagreements. And in the end, this is what we decided to go with. And like I said, the most important thing, I think, for everybody was really to keep it so that it was self-updating.
Yeah.
So that.
So if I were to throw out like 75 years, would that be significantly different? Are there a bunch, so 70 years right now is 1952. Is there, are there historically significant buildings that built in 1948 that would be then not covered if we did seven? I mean, what are we looking at in terms of buildings or houses that are?
Well, it's also signoric, it's historic, I'm sorry, I wanted to say two words at the same time. It's not really just historic. It is historic, but it's also historically and architecturally significant. So architecturally significant would fall a little bit differently on that, and that it might. And truthfully, I was one of the ones fighting for the 50-year rule. So I really liked 50-year rule, so I'm kind of really happy with it at 70 years. I'd really like to see it stay there.
Well, the only reason I'm kind of pushing a little bit on it is if someone says, oh, so this was built in 1951, and it's not really historically significant, but I have to go through all this, what's your, I mean, have you actually done?
They would really just have, they would really just have to get a determination by the Historic Commission, and that would be, it would be ruled out. I mean, pretty much, they said this at the last town meeting when we had it at the 50-year rule, that the Historic Commission is not going to go with every, you know, 1950s slab ranch or ranch or keep cod, you know, style house and determine that they're historically significant, because they're not.
All right, so let me ask you this, though. But is there a survey, I mean, are there historically, probably historically significant buildings, say, born, I mean, not born, but built in 1951?
There might be. So for instance, and I can give you, I can give you an example. So for instance, and I'm not really sure what year it was, it was built, so I can't really, I'm trying to be giving you an example without, and I don't like to do things without being 100% accurate because I'm really kind of, I like to be accurate. But let me just use this as an example. The Marconi's Building, for instance, was not a historical building. But it was, the design of it was, it was significant in the architecture. So they would have had a chance to look at it, depending on whether it were built before or after, right now, the way it sits right now. Depending on whether it was built before or after 1940. Now, if it was built 70 years prior, then they have to look at it. They still have to make a determination, and it's still going to be up to the Historic Commission. You know, there's a lot that would go into the determination. It doesn't get automatically placed as a historically significant building, but then again, it might have a chance. And there might be some that would necessarily, for instance, there could have been a building, someone grew up and became president, and maybe their house wasn't significantly old. But maybe they grew up in the 1980s, and maybe that house is significant because now they're present. I mean, it's just, it's a small thing that seems like a big thing, but I think it's not as big as you think.
I just, I'll just, so I would, if you're doing the 70 years, just be prepared to have some examples of 1951 buildings that, you know.
Okay.
All right.
All right, that's a good idea.
That would be my suggestion on that.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Joe, do you, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to just thank Nicole for all the work that you've done on this. It's greatly appreciated, Helen. And I just, and your, and your group of committee people that have worked on it. I'm still a little confused with some of the language that was presented tonight with some of the things that were, looks like we're missing some wording and some paragraphs. So I don't know if we should vote on anything tonight until we get a complete document that's been corrected and we can read it as a whole and not in separate sections. Because it seems that we're missing some, some vital language and stuff with respect to that. So I mean, I, I agree, and I'm for it 100%, but at the same token, I don't know if we should vote on this until we have a document that's completed and with all the changes that are necessary at this point.
So I, I agree with you, Joe. I don't think we need to vote on this tonight. I don't, I think, I think this is just more for informational purposes.
Yeah, discussion purposes, right, right.
Yeah, directional. So, you know, Helen, I think that the, the changes that you've made, especially since town meeting, are really positive. So I think that, you know, the board supports the changes and the work that you guys are doing. So as far as sort of next steps, you will take this over to the Historical Commission and then work with Michael on some of the other language. Make sure our town council has reviewed. And then hopefully, the Historic Commission will, will agree to sponsor this. And then we'll, we'll see it when it is ready to go on to the warrant. And then we'll, we'll see it when it is ready to go on to the warrant. Is there anything, is there anything else? I know I see a hand, oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead Helen.
No, I, I thought, I thought you were, I was just saying thank you. No, go ahead.
I do see a hand up from Julie. I'll, I'll go ahead and open it up for, for a comment, quick comment. Julie, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Julie Nardone, eighty-six Elliot Street. The seven, this is for Rob's comment. The seventy years would only be if someone wanted to do a demolition plan. And that's not a massive burden. So, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay. Thanks, Julie.
Okay, thanks Julie. Okay, if there's no further questions, Helen, we look forward to the next reiteration of this and, and good luck to you and, and Joan on the, the historic commission and congratulations for being appointed and thanks for, for wanting to, to serve. And we look forward to seeing you guys real soon. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great work, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, we have a little bit of time before our next scheduled appointment, so why don't we, under old new business, I think the warrant, we discussed the warrant articles, that should be a pretty quick discussion, correct? Yep, okay. So the next item on the agenda is to discuss potential warrant articles. And reminder on the last day to submit is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Michael Jen, I don't know, which-
Jen, you want to fax email on this one? So, you know, at Fall Town Meeting, we have a number of, of standard articles that we go through. So first of all, would be the appropriation of free cash according to our financial policies. So that would be an appropriation to the stabilization fund, appropriation to the OPEP trust. And then an appropriation to capital and/or one-time expenses as part of that. The other thing that we would do is we do our senior property tax exemption. And again, so that's pretty standard. The Board of Assessors would go through, they would do, vote a percentage of, of tax that would be the tax relief amount for the seniors. And so that would then go before town meeting for a vote. We also have a couple of articles that, that aren't standard articles. I'll start with one and I'll let Jen take, take the others if she has any. But first is we've been offered a donation of land at Cadillac Paint from Mr. Bob Skiabi. It's a little sliver of land between Cadillac Paint and Nancy Drive. So the town meeting would need to accept that, that property. So that would be on, that would be on the warrant. And Jen would-
The only other one that I have that's confirmed, obviously we have the demo delay that will be on and then also a road acceptance for Brockton Road Extension. So working with the planning department, we will potentially have to do a layout hearing for that.
Brockton Road?
Brockton.
Brockton.
Oh.
Extension.
And then just the timeline for, for, if there is any other intents to-
September thirtieth would be the deadline for, for notices of intent. A warrant article would be wanting, wanting to be presented.
Okay, and we will close the warrant on the nineteenth is what the scheduled date is. Yeah, okay. Does anybody have, Yolanda?
So that would mean citizens petition for it to be on the warrant article. Those would have to be in by the thirtieth, or?
No, just the notice.
Just the notice that it's hap, that they're trying to get it on the, on the warrant, okay.
Joe, do you have any questions or anything?
Nope.
No?
Nope, so far so good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, so let's move on in our agenda. We're kind of a couple minutes early, but I think we're all right. At seven forty, we have to discuss the historic preservation restriction on the property of four thirty-three Chestnut Street, the Hall House. Mr. Gustafson's here with us here in the boardroom tonight. Thank you for, for joining us. Just to give folks who might be on the meeting a little background, so four thirty-three Chestnut was property that was owned by the town. We knew that it needed major renovation and, and work and, and repairs done to it. And we, at the time, we didn't have the funds to, to be able to pay for the renovations ourselves. So we had put out an RFP for our partner. Mr. Gustafson was the, had responded to the RFP and we had sold the property to him along with the, with, with the preservation restrictions that, that we had drafted outlining what can and can't be done. So this house is historically significant because as many folks know, it was where Henry Warren had done some work in the basement of the Hall House. And it is an old and historic home. So we wanted to be able to, to preserve the historic nature of the property while being able to make it be its, its absolute best version of itself. So a year ago, we had signed this preservation restriction agreement with, with Paul Gustafson and work has started on the Hall House. Anyone who has driven by can see that some, some major renovations have happened or have started to happen. There were some things that had been, that, you know, any, any of us that have driven by know that it's, 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 it's a, you know, significant project that you have undertaken, so we know that that is, that is to be the case. What we wanted to do tonight was to talk about what you're, what you're, the work that you've been doing, where we are in the process. I know that there's been some, some feedback from the public and, and we just wanna make sure that, that we're all on the same page, that we're making sure that the the renovations that are being done are in line with the preservation restrictions. And if anything that needs to change, that we're at a point where the board can ask questions and we can make any adjustments that have to be made before things go further down, further down the path, so. So Paul, I don't know if you wanna come to the podium and kind of give us, give us an update as to the work that you're doing and, and sort of where we are?
Sure, and, hi, thanks for having me and I appreciate the info. So Paul Gustafson, formerly of Tendence in Silverbridge, sold my house a week ago. And I was prepared to, to show some visual aids, some, some pictures. Everyone, of course, knows, trimmied, you can see in the building, and I, I just, I realize it's, it's a shock. The content and the plan along with to remove the back portion of the house, which was significantly decayed. There was a port that was added on nineteen forty-ish, or whatever, that was added on to the original house. In the kitchen portion that occupied the back portion of the house, it was on a very bad foundation, basically stone. So that part was gonna be removed and it was always the intent to take the roof off. And of course, the, the roof being sort of a cape-style house, the roof represents most of the second floor. It was a short knee wall that went above the second floor and really didn't have to pulp and then it angled up. So when the roof came off, when the back came off, what you might think you saw are the plans on paper years ago, a year ago, eighteen months ago, when this whole thing started, when we drive by the property, obviously it was a pretty shocking, significant state that it was in as of a week ago. So I know there's a lot of concerns about that. And we continue forward, you know, we met with, with Michael, our building inspector. We want to get the front gable back up again. We're gonna replicate that exactly, get it up, get the house looking from the front to be its normal self again. Make people feel, that will make you progress and feel better about what was gonna happen to it. So that's where we're at right now and we're starting to frame out the back, the new rear portion of the property of the, of the house. And that's in progress. And we're, we're moving along. It's going at a good clip. We got a great crew. Very experienced in working with older homes and Sherber and Native, John Kaufman and his team. They were great. And we're frankly quote, I hope by late October, late October, we'll be weather tight, meaning windows will be in, the roof will be on and siding will be on. And it'll look a lot like, you know, what you sort of like. And with, you know, some modifications that were approved by the board, I was hoping it's turned off back a year, two years ago. So kind of what you're looking for in terms of an update?
Yep, yep, that's good. So I know that you, you have met with Doug Scott, our building inspector, our building commissioner, and Michael and spent a lot of time kind of going through to make sure that the changes that, the changes that you're making are still very much in line with the preservation restriction document that, that we have. I know it's our concern that, that we make sure that we keep the historical home, that, you know, we, the arrangement that, that we had was to really make sure that we keep, we keep the integrity of, of the house as much as possible within the guidelines that we had, we had set, so. So I'm gonna open it up to, do you want to, is there anything that you want to say, Michael, before I open it up to the board?
Sure. You know, just say, as the board has looked at the historical preservation restriction, there were certain things that were allowed. The board had first authorized the historical preservation restriction with a certain set of plans. Mr. Gustafson came back to the board in April with a modification, adding a number of windows to that plan, which the board agreed to. So Mr. Gustafson mentioned removing the, the rear portion of the property, which the, the board allowed. I think, you know, where, where the rub really is, is that this section of the historical preservation restriction, where it says the remaining main portion of the house will be gutted to its frame, outer sheathing, and much of the existing frame reinforced with new lumber via sistering. That just, that didn't happen. It, and I, I went and took a little closer look at some of the old, old studs that you have. They're providing really no structural support. They're just, they're just kind of there. And you were required to come, if you were gonna make a change like that, you were required to come before the board and request that change, and that didn't happen. So we've got a problem here. And, you know, there's some other correspondence that we've had during the course of, you know, this project where you clearly said you were gonna leave the second floor. You were gonna sister that, and that just got completely removed. So we, this is an issue. This is a problem. And that's, that's what I wanted to add right now.
I, I don't, I agree that the communication can always be better in any, any sort of project like this. I guess I didn't realize how closely we need to work together. I know, and I have some suggestions and thoughts about how to work, how to better work moving forward. I, the preservation agreement, I've read through it dozens of times at this point. Read through it obviously previous to, to all this, when I signed it. There are a number of things in there, including approval plans. And paragraph seven refers to those plans as, you know, that plan was what was gonna be built. When you go to actually build according to those plans in an old building like this, things are gonna pop up that weren't anticipated. But the things they're talking about as far as the roof coming off, in this, well, which, I say roof, the roof is the second floor. The roof was gonna be reframed to provide new doors per the plan. And in order to build those doors, the roof needs to come off. There's not much left there to sister. And then when the roof comes off, you're not left with much of a second floor anymore. You're left with those knee walls. And the drawings that were submitted for permit, which reflected the drawings that were approved by the select board, identified and indicated structural lumber to actually reframe the first floor deck that you stand on with new joists to code, which now fourteen inches thick high, replacing the six-inch lumber that used, that was there now, which deflected when you walked on it. So in order to have a stable house, a house that's gonna last another two hundred years, we had to replace the floor. And the floor is now thicker and higher, therefore, we had to raise the height of the first floor and reframe a new second floor deck that you stood on on the second floor that was stable. And that was fourteen-inch thick lumber. And that raised everything up. And that raises the first floor up into the second floor. So now this, what was left of the second floor, which is those knee walls, which are about three feet high, now became part of the first floor ceiling height. And then we built the second floor deck on top of that. And now we're, that's where we are at this moment. So I agree, we need to work better. Now I'm more, I guess, in tune with, you know, more day-to-day management, a weekly management of the project, or oversight of the project by the, by the select board. And I can, we could talk about how to do that. But these, you know, these, these things may have been a surprise, but again, I believe they're reflected in the drawings in paragraph seven of the preservation agreement. You know, everything is in the preservation agreement. However, again, plans were approved and, and those plans were what we're building to.
Steve?
So, Paul, thanks for coming here tonight. You know, I, I think it's unfortunate that you haven't come earlier in the process because now we are where we are. And I think that, for me, is the disappointing piece, is that, you know, per, you know, reading the restriction, you know, clearly you have an obligation to communicate. This is a unique, let's, let's call this a unique situation. And I think that's what I find disappointing, is that we didn't have an opportunity. I mean, we're, we're more than capable of, of getting an explanation of why something may need to change. We could evaluate that. But we weren't given that opportunity at all. So that I find disappointing. Particularly for, you know, a very unique project that, you know, I've never been involved, or I don't think this board has ever been involved in, in this type of project. And it's different than, you know, we have other projects that don't come into our arena that fall certainly under the planning board, where a developer, a builder does things that are outside the scope of the permitted project. And they don't communicate that. And that's where the problems arise. So, you know, I, I would just, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, you know, I think clearly the communication is, is, needs to be, needs to be better. I'm not quite sure how to fix this. I know Michael is doing some research right now and, you know, hopefully we can, we can come to some resolution that is, you know, satisfies everybody here.
Joe, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gustafson, I just have a couple of quick questions regarding this. I myself was shocked when I drove by and saw the building was completely, you know, dismantled. I guess because you're adding more of a frame to the, to the original structure, to the second floor, and the, the joists for the roof a little bit larger, does that affect the, the weight-bearing structures that are gonna support this? And this would cause an issue with the current foundation? That, that is gonna support that new structure?
So the foundation was previously reinforced with concrete. So it's a poured foundation in that, in the existing portion of the house. And it was deemed to be sufficient to hold up the, you know, the, the new structure of the second floor.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure there are no-
Yeah, it's, it's actually pretty cool. There used to be a stone foundation. They literally poured a new found, not my team, but years ago, poured a new foundation on the, on the inside of that. So when you go inside the foundation, it's actually, you know, you know, poured concrete, like you might see in a, in a newer house. A little bit different, cause it was done, you know, decades ago, but similar.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Joe. Does anybody else have any comments, questions? Yolanda?
You know, it, it's interesting to me, you know, in relooking at the, the restrictions that we put into place and looking at your plans, and it's funny, when I got some of this information, I said to Michael, I'm like, okay, what did we miss? And I feel like we went into an agreement with you, we sold you the property for fairly inexpensive, and we got land-baseded from that, from members of the community, and we did that trusting you, that you would follow the preservation and, and the information. And, um, when I was over there, uh, probably two weeks ago, and I was taking a yoga class out on the field, and someone said to me, "So are they gonna demolish the whole house?" And I said, "No, my understanding is that we're renovating it." And then I drove by and saw that the whole back of the house was gone and the top, you know, so I'm disappointed that you didn't come sooner and say, "Look, I, I can't do it based on the original preservation." And yes, maybe part of that's our responsibility, but we did this trusting you, we sold it to you hoping, you know, it, it was clear that people did not want this demolished, they wanted it renovated as much as possible with as much of the original materials. So to Steve's point, I'm not quite sure how we go forward from here. It's just very disappointing and I, I guess that's the biggest thing I have to say, is that driving by and then realizing, I mean, I, the foundation was gonna go, that's fine. But yeah, it was just disappointing.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, and, um, you know, I wish, you know, could've gone back and, and, and changed things. I just figured once I had the permit and the drawings were reviewed and, and, you know, it's good to go. I just felt that that was, you know, obviously the idea was to preserve it. It's interesting, I mean, just going back in history, the original bid was, and it was approv- it was not approved, but it was granted, was to tear it down and replicate it. And then Michael and I sat down and like, well, you know, there's a pushback, people really want to try to preserve it. But it was recognized at that point that the house was really pretty far gone and that it really needed to be torn down and replicated. So we scrapped those plans with the architect and, and I agreed with Michael, we'll go, we, I looked at it with another contractor that was more, uh, more experienced and said, "Yeah, you know, it's gonna be significant cost, and it's gonna be, a lot of it has to go away and be torn down anyways, but we can try to restore, we will restore as much as, as we can." So it's kind of the, the genesis of how we got to this point. And, and I apologize, it's disappointing. Again, if I go back in time and change things, we talked about the windows, you know, at that point, we, you know, talked about, oh, by the way, there's, you know, there's structural lumber involved in this, we, you know, remember now, we're putting these windows in this dormer, which now goes along the whole length of the building, uh, north and south side, you know, before there were shorter dormers, now we're longer dormers, do we all understand that? And then by doing that, it means we're gonna re, you know, refra- take the roof off and reframe it, and if you take the roof off, you're really losing a lot of this, most of the second floor. And maybe had more of a verbal conversation about this, rather than just relying on, on the, the RFP and the proposal, and then the dr- the concept drawings, and then the actual construction drawings, relying on those to, to convey what was gonna happen. Maybe should, probably should've been a lot more conversation. So, message, message heard.
So my, my concern is what we do now. So like, you know, how do we, how do we either, um, fix the issue, fix the issues that aren't in compliance? Or how do we go forward so we can have a successful project? Because, you know, we want the, we want the, we want the whole house preserved and renovated, but we want, we do want it done in a, in a way that's consistent with what the intention was. We don't want to lose the, the preservation restriction on the property because things have changed. So from like a go-forward basis, I think I saw an email that, um, you're having a, a stamped survey sent to the town?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, obviously, you know, I'll, I'll throw in my two cents worth about what I, um, you know, maybe some ideas about what to do going forward. But just to step back from that, so when Michael and I met, uh, we talked about the height going up because of these fatter four systems that were going in place and everything kind of ri- raised up, and it was gonna be a, an overall increase of three feet to the building. It would look pretty much, it would look the same, but just go up three feet when we replaced the front gable. If we talked about that, the original intent was only to two-foot increase, so Michael said, "Any way we can go back and keep, you know, you'll have to keep within that two-foot envelope." So met with the team and, you know, within five hours, we found a way of doing that and, um, put the, you know, re, you know, frame the new gable, put it up, um, and now we're only two feet higher than the original, uh, house, um, in order to accommodate the, the thicker floor, you know, beams, lumbers, lumber that's in there. So yeah, so, uh, it measures, uh, there's a rock wall, there's a rock on that wall that the, um, architect had used to reference when he measured the height of the old building, which is twenty-five feet, ten inches. And we've measured to that same spot, and it's, um, you know, it's actually supposed, can't be more than twenty-seven, ten. We think it's less than that actually, uh, by a few inches. But yeah, so Doug Scott and Michael made the request, and I think it's the, the proper request, to put people at ease, that we'll get a surveyor out there to, to measure it and make sure that we're within that, that height restriction.
How are you still doing construction as you're waiting for that?
Yes.
You are, okay. So if, if it comes back and it's not compliant, then that's on you to fix?
It'd be on us to fix, we gotta stay within that ten foot. I am hundred percent confident that it's within that height. Tape measure doesn't lie. And the architect had assumed two feet from the top of the old, old floor to the reference point, and, um, we're well, you know, less than that. So I think we've got some margin of error to work with, thankfully.
Michael, what, so from like a, um, like a historical perspective, what, like, what are the, what are the risks, what are we, what are we potentially, you know, dealing with? Cause it, cause it, it was going to retain its historical preservation. Are we, is that still possible with this, with what's happening?
Well, Paul, I appreciate you salvaging as much material as you could, but I appreciate that I salvaged and saved some of the, as much of the old stuff as you could.
Yeah, we just turned it on.
We just turned it on.
And I'm gonna try to incorporate, like, the interior of the house was, you know, not gonna say, kind of do whatever you want in the interior, but need to preserve the exterior. So in the interior of the house, when it gets all sheet rocked, you're not gonna see much of this lumber. So I've got some thoughts about incorporating some of the old planking that we've salvaged, um, you know, the, the foundation is kind of cooled down in the basement, some of the stone that's exposed, you know, find a way of, you know, incorporating that into some of the interior finish work if it's possible.
What I, what I would like to do, and what I'd like to suggest the, the board allow me to do, is, is I've already reached out to Mass Historical to have a conversation with their local program manager. I'd love to have a conversation with them to figure out what's the best pathway forward from, from this point on, you know, knowing that you have, uh, some material, some historic material, uh, knowing that there's still some other his, you know, a few remaining historic pieces, you know, left on the house. I'd like to have a conversation with them and bring, come, hopefully they will be able to help provide some recommendations on, again, the best way to move forward, and then bring that before you and the board, and we can discuss, discuss those.
Sure, I mean, right now, I'm trying to, I kept, one of the interesting characteristics of the building were these very ornate brackets that were eat, left and right of the front door, which held this roof, so when you're knocking the front door, you have a, like a portico over your head. Uh, so we, you know, those corbels were salvaged, they're always intended to salvage those, and we're gonna put them back on and rebuild that roof. And in the process of, the front door is, is, you know, it's cracked and it's, you know, not up to code as far as, you know, um, you know, weather and, and, you know, insulation abilities. So I'm trying to find and replicate a door that looks the same, it's sort of a unique door, so, I'm working on that. So yeah, I'm, but I'm opening other suggestions as, as well. I mean, I'm trying to do what's right, and, and, you know, I've always had that intention and plan, I'm just a, you know, local guy in town that bought a house, and I thought it'd be cool to, to, you know, to, to renovate it and, and make it look a lot like what it did, and keep it from falling down.
So, that's, that's my recommendation, is that we have a conversation with Mass Historical.
I think that's a, I think that's a good call.
Do you know the, what the timing might be on that?
I mean, Jen and I have been playing phone tag, um, so I, I would expect I would get a call from here this week at some point. And I'll have to let you know, based on that conversation, what kind of direction things would be going in.
I've got, again, be more conversation, but just so you know, I've got some pictures, I don't know whether I can get control of the screen, I can share my monitor, but I just wanted, I thought one important picture was showing the new gable compared to the old gable, the new, you know, front of the house compared to the old front of the house, if that would be helpful, uh, with anybody, I can try to show that.
I think I do.
I don't know if you can share my screen, or, I'm not a expert Zoom person, but if somebody wants to walk me through it, I can do it.
So if you go down to the bottom where it says shared screen, you're now a co-host, so you should be able to share.
Uh, okay, so I just pick what I want to share, which, uh, which thing here, okay, here it is. Where am I looking? Okay, maybe a double click? All right, there it is. So, you know, the old building on the left with the siding removed, some of the siding removed, the front door has, you know, some plywood over it, so it's, it's not like in the original shape. But I wanted, you know, show the old gable, and it, they're sort of taken at the same place, you know, you can sort of look across and just see that, you know, the, uh, can I do a mouse on this? Oh yeah, here we go. So this is the original roof rake return, you know, they come, the roof, the roof comes down, these are called rakes, and then they return in a little bit, so we follow that across to the new one we built, which is looking exactly the same. By the way, all the trim, the soffit, the fascia, there's a crown molding strip that runs up, I don't know if I can zoom in on this or not, but anyways, uh, we, we, you know, we replicated all that, and, but anyways, the height difference, you can see, you know, the old was probably here, and the new is up here, and then same, I mean, this is, you know, two different photographs, but, uh, and again, we'll measure all this, but anyways, it, it, we put it up, um, quickly, cause we wouldn't want people, you know, to be satisfied that was going back, was it gonna be torn down, and we're gonna put it back, uh, looking a lot like what it was. The windows are closer because these windows are right up against a corner, a shutter was cut at an angle to fit it in there, so we moved these in. At one point, I had one window in the front, and, you know, a year and a half ago, the board reviewed and said, "Geez, really should do two windows." And I said, "Yeah," I mean, I don't know why the architect only had one. So anyways, two windows, two windows down below, uh, the front door will be replicated, and, um, it looks a lot better than it did when you, you may have driven by it, Yolanda, two weeks ago. Anyways, um, you know, just, you know, just to quickly show some, this is the roof after the roof sheathing was taken off. I mean, these are barely two-by-fours, they're probably four feet apart, that's what was holding up the roof. That, this is a second floor deck, uh, floor, this is that knee wall I was talking about, which goes up maybe three feet, you can see it again right here. So this floor deck went up, you know, fourteen inches from downstairs, fourteen inches, so it basically was built on top of this knee wall, this, the second floor. And that's why everything kind of went up two feet. But, uh, and this shows, you know, more of the, of the, some of the, you know, some of the old framing that was there, gives you a sense of what it, what it looked like. In the basement, this is the foundation, which is that poured concrete I was talking about earlier. This stuff here is a new floor joists that go across to create this first floor deck. It's built on top of the old, uh, floor joists, I put a tape measure there, but that's about a one-by-six, um, and I don't know why this picture changed, but, um, the, these, these two-by-six floor joists, uh, were actually notched down to fit into the old sill, which would further weaken them. So we built the new floor on top of this, we had to keep the old floor intact because you don't want to take out the floor before you have the new floor, cause if you take out the floor, you're just left with a shell and your walls are gonna blow out, uh, cause the floor is actually holding things together. So we built the new floor on top and then cut out the old floor down below and had, let it come into the basement. So that's how that was done, so that we wouldn't have those, you know, we wouldn't structurally compromise the, the building. So what else? Oh yeah, so. Yeah, uh, that shows, I don't know if you can see it there, but I have a tough time with this mouse, but where those, what's remaining of the two-by-six floors, I'm gonna do this. So, yeah, so remains of the two-by-six floors are actually notched to fit into that old sill, so. You don't notch lumber anymore like that, cause it's basically what you're, you're, you're only as strong as the weakest link, so you're only as strong as that two to three inches that's left behind where it goes in. So anyways, I, I just hope that kind of helps, um, show what's going on over there. I'm always, you know, not always there, but I mean, I'm welcome to, anyone's come by, tour the site, see what's going on, put your hard hat on, take a look, I'm happy to host people too. So, that's it with the pictures.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks, Paul. So I would say, you know, maybe the next step is, we talk to Mass Historical, we, we find out sort of where we stand with them, um, get an opinion from them, and, um, put this on the agenda for our next meeting, and, you know, you're welcome to come and join us, not, you don't have to be here in person, you can, you know.
Yeah, I thought it was important to be here the first time.
I, I, I personally appreciate your being here, so, um, when we first found out about this, it, it was a, it was a shock and it was a, um, I will be very blunt, I was angry, very angry. And I was, my position was, we need to rectify this now. So, um, I appreciate, you know, you're taking us through all this, and your being here tonight is, is great. I'm also really, it's important to me that we stay within our preservation restrictions, so we need to make sure that, that, um, cause this, you know, this isn't your average project. This isn't, this isn't something where, you know, you can make changes on the fly and it doesn't affect things. This, you know, this is, um, you know, first and foremost, you have the oversight of the select board, and, you know, that's written into our agreement, so, you know, it's, it's important that, that we're part of this process as things change, um, and work to get it back in compliance. So.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing, we're maybe not on the same page is, you know, and I don't want to be on record that we're like way out of compliance. I mean, based on expectations, it may appear out of compliance. You know, any audibles that were made during construction were pretty minor, but again, what you see in this picture, taken off the, the roof, taken off the back, is always part of the plan. So like, I think we're in compliance with the drawings, we may not, it may be discussion about whether we're in compliant with, um, I guess, the, um, the overall theme of the preservation agreement, um, which might say you need to preserve a mobile building.
Or specifics.
Or specifics or nuances of it, so, um, so I think we, now I'm more sensitive to what degree of what we need to discuss, what level of, um, change that might need to be discussed.
Steve?
Just a quick question about timeline, we're, we're gonna, um, we've given Michael the, uh, request to move forward with Mass Historical, um, and you're doing a survey at this point in time as well?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a surveyor, you know, right now, as you've probably heard, in, in real estate, construction, housing, uh, industry right now, everyone is like so busy, and it's trying to get anyone to do anything right now is, is hard, so, um, I have an engineer and a surveyor, uh, and I'm trying to get them over there to...
Would you anticipate within the next two weeks?
Oh, I, that, yeah, I hope so.
So is timeline, is that our next meeting, does that make sense?
I think it makes sense to have some level of update.
Update at the next meeting, okay.
What's happening construction-wise, or do we need to do certain things, and like with the weather and the proof?
We stay within the two feet, um, so we're progressing, um, with the back addition now, which is on the new concrete, new foundation, um, so we're going ahead with that, so...
So let me just ask a question, like a hypothetical. So what happens if Mass Historical comes back and says, "This, this no longer qualifies as historical because of, because it's not, it, because, because it's no longer following what's in the preservation restriction." What, what happens then?
I have no idea. I don't know what that would mean.
What if they come back and say you have to reframe the thing with old reclaimed lumber?
I don't know. I mean, uh, if that's what they want, that's what the town wants, then I'll, I would have to consider it, I'd have to talk to, um, the people that are working on the job, I would have to talk to my architect, I've talked to my engineer to see what implications that would have. So I, I would like to commit to that right here and now, and, uh, I don't know what I'm... So I, I would like to commit to that right here now and, uh, I don't know what I'm, I need to have all the information before I can make a decision. So I'm a bit of a, bit of a, I like to be, um, you know, I like to make a decision with all the facts. But I would like to make the board happy and the town happy, and if that's what they ask for, then I would try to do that. I just gotta know what that all means.
Does anybody else have any? Yolanda?
I would just say that, you know, maybe things need to stop, right? I mean, I know you're trying to move forward, I hear you're saying, you know, about the weather and trying to get things enclosed. But from your point, Brandy, if you say that Mass Historical says you have to go back and do it with reclaimed lumber versus new lumber.
We could always sister that in.
I would hate for you to tear, I would hate for you to build it and then tear it down and have to rebuild it.
So the front portion of the house is wide open, um, so they wanted us to sister in reclaimed lumber, original lumber. That's wide, wide open to do that, um, I don't have any pictures that would show that. So we're not gonna, you know, we can do that from the inside and, and put those, you know, tho- tho- those lumber in there.
But, but even, but I would think even like the back of the house, right? I mean, you've put in now brand new floor joists.
Well, the back of the house is totally, totally new, right?
Right.
The porch and the old kitchen is, that's gone.
Right.
That was always part of the plan.
And I just, you know, I, I commented to Steve that you said you had to build the old, you had to put the new floor on top of the old floor. Because otherwise the sides would fall in, well, I'm not an expert, but I do know that a lot of historical buildings that are a lot older than this house do get redone. And they put up structure to maintain the exterior of the building so that they can do or redo a floor. So it's a little, again, I'm gonna go back to that word disappointing, that I'm sure it was less expensive to take it all down.
It was expensive.
But, but could you have kept the outside of the building that was good and then redone the floor? So I would say, again, I don't want you to build it and then if Mass Historical says you need to do reclaimed lumber. Because I would even think the kitchen, even though that the ba- the foundation is new and you're building a new kitchen, could you do it with reclaimed lumber? Because I would think that some of the lumber from the house would still be usable. So I don't know that you should do any more construction until we have this determination. Would be a possible recommendation.
So, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna respectfully, uh, request that we don't shut down the project. There are significant reasons for not, uh, doing, for not doing that. I'm gonna lose my crew, um, they're gonna go on to another job, if there's another job for them to go to. So it might be several months before they cycle back onto this job. At that point, I'm exposed to weather, uh, some of the original part of the, what, what's left is the original part of the building, as you can see in these pictures, is exposed to weather. Those planks haven't seen the light of day in quite some time, um, they need to be covered and the roof needs to be put on. The back half of the building was always gonna be, not, incident with the roof, uh, was always gonna be removed. Uh, so now we're back stepping on that and we're back pedaling on that and saying, well, now you need to reframe it, you know, it's just, that was never the intent. It was pretty clear that the back half of the house is gonna be a new addition that replicated the old one. So I, I would like to keep the guys going and there's a lot of reasons to do that, preservation wise, um, timing wise, um, the weather, you know, three months, we're gonna be into snow. And, um, and I also think it's not this, you know, it's not in line with the drawings that were approved.
So I would say let's, um, let's revisit this in two weeks when we have all more information. And then we can make a decision as far as like how to best move forward. You know, anything that you do, you know, I, I know you know this, but it's at your own risk in case something like change, i- in case we have to pivot. So, um, I'm putting that out there because if, because if, if there is stuff that comes back, we have the ability to enforce, enforce the, the. En- enforce compliance. And so we want to work with you on this, just understand that there are things that are very important to us with this, with this property and this parcel. And we're not, I'm, I am not willing to compromise that. So just know that upfront.
Okay.
Anything else? Joe, are you all set? He's good, okay, all right. Thank you, Paul.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
Appreciate it, guys.
We'll talk to you in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Oh, you're supposed to stop sharing.
Oh, yeah.
You're good, you've been good. Yep, thank you.
Okay. Um, so moving on in our agenda, we had already discussed the warrant articles. Um, so under old new business, it's an update on private development projects. Uh, Michael, turn it over to you.
Yeah, just thought, um, you know, we've had discussions about specific private development projects going on in town. But thought it would be good just to give a, a general overall view of what's happening, um, especially at the planning board. Uh, so currently the planning board has, um, a hundred and twenty unit, uh, mixed use, uh, multifamily apartment building. At five oh one Pond Street, um, that is currently before the board, getting, they've, they've been before the board, I think, for a little over a year now. That has twenty-five percent of those units are affordable, I don't remember exactly how big the commercial space is. But I believe it's on two corners of the building. So again, that's currently before the planning board and I think they're making adjustments and making changes, uh, per the board's request is, that's happening.
Is that getting close to a decision?
You know, I wouldn't want to speculate to say.
Okay, all right.
You know, the planning board is, is doing their work, they're doing their due diligence and I think when they feel like they're comfortable, that it's at a place where they can approve it, they'll move forward with that. Uh, I believe so, I believe they're still, they haven't talked about reducing that. A hundred and twenty units. Um, the next one that's currently before the board is a hundred Chestnut Street at the Village of America site. It would essentially be replacing the, the old bunker buildings that they have there. So that is a hundred and seventy-four units. Um, again, before the planning board, it, it's, it is considered mixed use space because it does have commercial. I believe it has either ten thousand or twenty thousand square feet of commercial. There's a lot of documents that are guiding the discussion about that one, including a covenant and a bylaw and a ZBA decision, in addition to the zoning. And, um, again, I think the planning board is getting close to a decision on that one as well. That has ten percent affordable as part of it. Um, and I believe they are also, the developer is contemplating making a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and then also the Upper Charles Trail. Ten to sixty Main Street is one of the recent ones that, uh, is before the planning board now, so we've talked about that one for a couple of years. They have gone ahead and submitted an application to the planning board. I think, uh, Rob and Yolanda, I, I think especially you as you were working, you two as you worked on the working group. Um, the design is, is, I, I think personally, it, it's very different than what the working group ended up with, uh, what, what was coming out of the working group, so that is a bit disappointing. But they had their first meeting in front of the planning board at the last, uh, planning board meeting, so they just talked about it generally, general overview. The planning board talked about how consequential this, you know, this project is, which they're not wrong about.
How many, how many units there?
So it's two hundred units with thirty thousand square feet of commercial and twenty-five percent would be affordable.
And Michael, I think at one time you talked about that one having, um, needing a certain kind of agreement, which gives the planning board some latitude over the, the, uh, the plan. Is that still true or is that?
Well, it needs a special permit, so it's not just site plan, so it needs a special permit, which gives the board, the planning board, um, a little bit more discretion. About, about the project in terms of approving it and setting conditions and requiring certain things. So yeah, that's, that's an important component. And then finally, the one that most recently came before the planning board was, um, the Walgreens. Used to be the Rite Aid, now it's the Walgreens, it's now being proposed to be turned into a Starbucks at the corner of Cherry Street and one thirty-five, so. Some people, uh, hail that as a victory, the fact that Starbucks is looking to come here, some people, um, not so much. So, but again, they just opened up in front of the planning board.
It's some special thing, they're gonna be all electric or net zero or something?
I don't recall that, Rob.
There's something, but maybe there was just a planning board, some wanted them to be.
They're gonna be unionized?
Um, that is yet to be seen, I'm not sure that can be incorporated into the decision.
Into the decision?
But I, I will say, there has been a rumor out there that there's gonna be a roundabout.
To handle the traffic?
To handle the traffic. At that, at that intersection, I, I can tell you that's, that's highly unlikely, just the amount of.
We love our rotaries.
No, but that, that does raise, it raises a good, uh, you know, good discussion relative to the drive-through and how it impacts a, a pretty busy section. Uh, of converging, uh, streets, uh, on a busy, on a busy, uh, major road, so it'll be interesting to see how that gets resolved.
Yeah, um, yeah, they'll have to do traffic studies and, and all of that, so the planning board had expressed some concerns about traffic. I thi- I think actually, um, some of our employees actually did as well, but I do not think it's going to be solved with a roundabout. I think just the amount of takings that you would have to do to fit a roundabout in there would be difficult, so no, I'm gonna say no roundabout.
I suspect, I suspect that was, that was said in jest relative to, you know, a lot of the commentary about our roundabout in construction phase.
Well, if it was said in jest, you know how that works, you know, all of a sudden it becomes reality, so. And if it was on Facebook, it's definitely real, so.
So, Michael, before we move on, man of chair, I have a quick question with respect to that building. Are they gonna write, uh, disassemble that building and put a new building in? Because that is one large building for, for Starbucks.
Um, I believe so, Joe.
Yeah, the, the permit calls for the demolition of that building and the construction of a, a smaller footprint, Joe.
Okay. Hopefully they'll be able to get a storage lane in there when they turn left of one thirty-five.
On the property, go around in the driving, drive-through.
A queue, queue up.
So.
Yeah.
One thing I just wanted to just make sure people understand, so like, you know, the five oh one Pond Street and the hundred Chestnut have been going on for a while. And those were previously Fafford's properties, and so with Fafford's passing, he, his estate has been selling his properties. Um, so we've been seeing, that's one of the reasons that we've been seeing more, um, more projects, just because of the timing of that, right?
Yeah, I, I think that is a big, big thing because you're talking about, well, two of the four properties I mentioned are Fafford.
Yeah.
Uh, Fafford owned properties. I think it's also a good opportunity to make the point that these aren't, um, these aren't necessarily town sponsored projects. Um, nobody on, nobody on our staff, none of the board members, I feel confidently in saying this, have gone to developers and said. Hey, would you like to build two hundred units or a hundred and twenty units or a hundred and seventy-six units? That has not happened. I've been on record saying I support the redevelopment of ten to sixty Main Street and, um, I've talked to Rich about that for years. But the composition of his project is his, his making, based on his financial requirements, his financier's requirements and what he would like to do. It's not that any of us asked for, for it to be composed the way it does, so I think that's important to note.
And we can't deny applications as long as it fits within our zoning. So it's not like something that we can just say no to.
Yeah, special permits, you got a little bit more flexibility, but still you have to.
Go through the process.
You have to go through the process.
But you know, there's other pressures that are, that are applied to communities. Uh, and predominantly they come from the state and, you know, when you, when we talk about, you know, forty B and when we talk about the MBTA. Uh, commuter regulations that are, that have just kind of been refined. And we talk about, uh, you know, safe harbor from, from projects like this, there's big ramifications here. And a lot of it is, is, uh, you know, yes, property owners have a right to, to utilize their property, uh, as they see fit. And then on the flip side, we're getting pressure from the state to, that encourages this as well. And, uh, you know, I, I cer- I don't have the answer to it, I mean, it seems, uh, like, uh, we'll probably talk about the MBTA scenario, uh, at some point soon. Uh, and, uh, but there's been, I, I know they've, they've made some, uh, some adaption, adapting the, the regulations, not as onerous as they were. But still, there's, there's pressure on communities to build and to support these, these kinds of projects.
Yolanda?
Well, and also just to meet our affordable housing numbers.
Right.
Right, I mean, unless we, i- i- it's that sort of catch twenty-two, we're at, what, six percent of affordable housing? State requires that we have ten percent affordable housing. And how do we get there? And part of it is to build housing, but then that increases your amount, so as we're building new, we want to make sure part of it's affordable. So it's, it's, it's tough.
The, the issue though is that the state's agenda doesn't always align with the local agenda.
Correct.
And that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Right.
And, uh, and it's, it's, it's going to be, I think, a larger and larger problem as we move forward, you know? Just thinking about the, you know, we mentioned Mr. Fafford, uh, and, you know, Mr. Fafford and his companies radically changed this town forty, fifty years ago. And we're becoming radically changed again, not by one developer, but, but by multiple developers, you know? And how do we manage that? We don't seem to be in any better shape to manage that today than we did back then.
But, but the other thing on top of that is Ashland is a desirable town.
They're all desirable towns, we're not special.
Okay, but I think that we have certain things, our special education program is very good, which means people want to come here so they can send their kids to our schools. We're in a great location between Worcester and Boston, we are right on the commuter rail, so yeah, maybe they're all desirable towns. But you hear people say they're looking at Ashland because of certain things.
Yeah, because we still are on the, the lower end of the, the scale as far as costs go.
Right, that too.
Right?
That's changing.
Well, that's true, it's changing, but you know, certainly house prices, but, you know, when you look at our, uh, you know, our tax rates. You know, we're at the lower end of the scale, so, yeah, we're, we, we all want to feel we're desirable, of course we are. But, you know, no less than Hopkinton or Holliston or Midway or any of the towns in this area that have grown in a very similar way over the last twenty, thirty years.
Well, that's why we're looking at a comprehensive plan, right?
It's part of the reason, yeah.
Joe, I know you have your hand up, go ahead.
No, I didn't want to interrupt, that was, I was just gonna bring that, that up about the comprehensive plan and, uh, with respect to, uh, affordable housing. You mentioned the projects that are, that are in front of the planning board right now. I think it's, I think it's upon us to make sure that the developers that are coming in that want to build, uh. We hold their feet to the fire with respect to affordability in units. Uh, I know there's one individual, one developer that's steadfast, he's ten percent and he's not gonna do any more than that. Well, why? Why, why, why are we allowing that to happen? I, I think, I think it's upon us to, you know, these folks come in and, you know, they, they rake over the town and then. After, after everything's said and done, within four, five years, maybe even ten years, they sell out and we're stuck with, you know, holding the bag. And, and I think this is an opportunity for us to, you know, add to our affordable units, uh, in one way, shape or form. Now granted, twenty-five would be great because that means all the units, but I'll, uh, I'll take, I'll take fifteen percent. That just adds on to the affordability, uh, of, to the, of those units to our total. Granted, we're not gonna get the ten percent right away, but it, we're, we're edging up closer to it. And, um, not to do, not to be able to do that, I, I think we're, we're missing out on an opportunity here. And I think it's, I think it's on the, uh, developers to, uh, to agree to that. They want to be, they want to be town friendly, that's the way to be town friendly amongst other things. You want to give us a donation to an affordable housing trust or, or to whatever, that's nice. Do one better, give us the affordable units. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Joe, does anyone else have any comments, questions, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one that's not before the planning board, but is, uh, I think getting on people's radar screen. So Edens, uh, who manages the Shaw's complex, um, they are currently in the process of, I believe, putting together a plan for a hundred and. currently in the process of, I believe, putting together a plan for a hundred and twenty units at the Shaw's Plaza. Um, they would also be looking at refurbishing, uh, a portion of the commercial section of that plaza as well. So, reason I bring it up is that they're having, uh, public forums.
Tonight?
Uh, one is tonight. The next one is, um, next, next Wednesday. I believe that, is it Monday? Okay, uh, next Monday. And I believe they start at six, six P M.
Where do they, where are they advertising these forums?
So they sent letters to a butters and then they have, um, found out today, they just come up with a site.
I can send it out to everybody.
That'd be great. Yeah, where do they, did they post it somewhere or?
And are the forums online or?
Yeah.
Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, I believe, so there's a website that people can go to. It's called Shaw's Plaza Project dot com. If people wanna find out more.
It's not much of a website, but, but it is something.
It is something and it has the meetings and the Zoom links.
Okay.
It's part of that. So, anyway, put that on people's, uh, people's radar screens.
Yeah, what did you, they, they talked about how many units?
So they're contemplating a hundred and twenty units.
And it, there's a, there's an affordability component, right? There's like.
I think they're looking at twenty-five percent, I believe it says that in their communication.
Deeper affordability.
They're looking at deeper affordabilities. So forty units would be at the forty to sixty percent income level. Forty units would be at the hundred and twenty percent income level, which they consider workforce housing.
Yeah.
And then forty units at the market rate.
Yeah. Now, there's also, uh, unconfirmed rumors about additional development further down on one twenty-six. Specifically where the Lyons Christmas tree lot was for years and years.
Bacon, been a bacon lot for.
And, uh, there's some abutting property there as well. That seems to be headed in that direction.
Yeah, Capital Group Properties has bought, um, has bought that property. And so they're, they're a developer. The last time we ran across, um, Capital Group was with the Valentine.
That's right, yeah.
Uh, which we ended up, which they ended up permitting a forty B at a hundred and twenty units. And, um, you know, we ultimately ended up purchasing that property to keep that forty B from happening. So.
Anything new on U G C? They're just kinda, cause that one, you know, is ready to move.
It's ready to go. Exactly.
Good. Well, I probably got off on a tangent there, sorry.
No, it's, it's a, it's a deep, deep subject.
There's a lot, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, um, unless anybody else has any questions on that, we'll move on in our agenda.
Yep.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is to discuss and vote on town manager's contract. This evening in executive session, we had, um, discussed, based on, um, Michael's evaluation and, and our, um, discussion at our August third meeting. We had, um, said we would be open to, um, extending his contract for a year. So, uh, tonight's meeting, we discussed the details. So the agreement would, um, extend the contract to, for a year and be effective until nine, six, twenty, twenty-five, um, with a three percent rate increase, which has been the, um, um, the rate that we've, that we've had historically. Um, the board also, um, talked about, um, approving, uh, a bonus, a two percent bonus based on F Y twenty-three. And so at this point, um, we had discussed those terms and we need to, um, vote. And so, um, unless there's any discussion from the board, um, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we approve, as we did in executive session, the extension of Michael Herbert, our town manager's contract to nine, six, twenty, twenty-five.
Second.
And a roll call vote? Greaves' eye.
Mitchell, eye.
Chair, eye.
Maniani, eye.
Kinsman, eye. That passes five, zero. And then, uh, for the bonus.
I move that we approve a bonus of two percent of his January first, twenty twenty-two salary based on the contract, um, based on his last review. And to just note that this is the first time that we are doing this based on his contract.
Seconds.
Roll call vote? Greaves' eye.
Mitchell, eye.
Chair, eye.
Maniani, eye.
Kinsman, eye. That passes five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, um, moving on in our agenda, cha- discuss changing the Oc- October fifth, twenty twenty-two regularly scheduled meeting due to Yam Kapoor. Um, so the, the meeting that, um, so our, right now, our, our next, our next meeting is going to be on September twenty-first. So this would be two meetings from now. Um, so our October dates would, um, would we want to potentially move the, the fifth meeting to October twelfth? Would that be, would that be something that the board? I see a thumbs up from Joe. Would that be something that the board would be?
And would we leave the?
Well, we had also discussed the possibility of, um, it's not on this agenda, but as we were talking about schedules, I had let people know that I'm not gonna be available for the November second meeting. So maybe we have to push this to the next meeting. Um, but then we were looking, could we in October do the twelfth and the twenty-sixth versus the fifth and the nineteenth? And if we can't vote that second change yet, that's fine, but I just wanna bring it up there that.
Yeah. We, we may be down to, to, well, we would be down to three members on that date, on, on November second. So, um, so we will, we'll, I think we'll wait to take the vote on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
To move that meeting, um, from the nineteenth to the twenty-sixth. But if, um, if everyone is, is in favor of moving the October fifth to the twelfth, does that sound, sound okay for everybody?
Steve was okay with that.
Yeah, I think so.
And then what would we do with the twenty-sixth? Leave it in, oh.
So we're, right now, we're supposed to be on the nineteenth. So it would be the, so we would be, right now, as of now, we're meeting on the, the twelfth and the nineteenth, cause that's the third October, uh, third Wednesday in October. Um, and so hypothetically, we would move to the, to the twelfth from the twenty-sixth. Would that, how does that look for, for you, Michael?
It, it's fine as long as it doesn't hurt Halloween.
Okay, we're not hurting Halloween.
We're not hurting Halloween. Monday, the thirty-first.
Always.
The Halloween party's the twenty-eighth, so we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing on the twenty-eighth, promise.
So I think Steve, we're moving.
You're good for the twelfth of October instead of the fifth?
Okay.
And are we also moving to the twenty-sixth?
We're gonna do that one at the next, in the next. So do, I move that we take our October fifth meeting and move it to October twelfth in reference to Yam Kapoor.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Greaves' eye.
Mitchell, eye.
Chair, eye.
Maniani, eye.
Kinsman, eye. That carries five, zero. So we're gonna move the, the meeting, our first meeting in October will be Wednesday, October twelfth. All right, thank you. Um, our next agenda item is discuss the volunteer barbecue and vote on funding for the event. Um, so Yolanda hosted our, um, our volunteer appreciation event at her house. God bless her.
Isn't that bad?
I heard it was awesome and I was sorry I had.
Sorry that you had to miss it and that Joe had to miss it.
I was, I was in quarantine. Nobody wanted to be with me. Um, so the, um, so the, the one thing that we have, I know that, um, Susan had sent me an email and we were pretty, um, pretty finalized on the, the, the funds, but we hadn't allocated anything to pay for the event. Um, so Susan sent me a note that, um, that we should look to, uh, approve a not to exceed six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Oh.
Um, out of the, it would be out of the, uh, select board's gift account. And is there anything else that we wanna add to that?
Well, I believe we should add thirty dollars onto that for.
Susan had that amount this morning. I emailed her the amount. I just had to get her the receipt.
So that's included, okay.
So Susan, that six twenty-five amount includes the thirty dollars? Okay, all right, just wanna make sure. Great.
And Susan, I gave Michael the receipt, so he has it. He'll get it to you.
Okay.
It's on your, it's on your chair already.
I move that we approve funds not to exceed six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the volunteer barbecue that was held.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote?
Greaves' eye.
Mitchell, eye.
Chair, eye.
Maniani, eye.
Kinsman, eye. That carries five, zero. So thank you, thank you to Yolanda. Thank you to Susan for putting all that together.
It was a good event.
Yeah.
I would just like to say, it might be good to get feedback from the volunteers who were able to attend to see if they enjoyed that for- format. We've typically done it in the, in the community center inside in March. Maybe timing could be better, cause I know it was sort of last minute, but if people are interested in keeping it outside, so.
So speaking of the gift account, uh, one of the things we probably should put on the agenda coming up is, uh, the grant.
Full grant.
Oh, okay.
Full rounds.
Yep.
Yolanda, just, just with respect to that, I heard from several, uh, volunteers, uh, who attended the, uh, the gathering and they had a wonderful time.
Good.
And, uh, and I'm sorry that I could not be there, but I was doing puppy watch.
Yeah, I just wanna add, yeah, we had some great conversations and thanks, Yolanda, for.
Yeah.
It was lovely. Um, it's good, uh, you know, it's nice to get together informally and give people a chance to talk a little bit about being volunteers for the town and all the things. So it's good, you know, I always appreciate it, cause I get to meet people I haven't met before and what are they, what are they doing with the town and, you know, so it was really, a really great event. And it always is and, uh, we can talk about how we do it next year.
Yeah.
It was nice, it was nice. I had a few people come up and said, who was that guy?
Oh, man, well, well.
It was nice, yeah.
Um, thank you for hosting and I'm glad. I saw pictures.
My pleasure.
Steve took his, his annual selfie with, you know, he, or his, uh.
It was a good one.
It came, it did, it came out great. So you guys, you guys, uh.
We asked, the Evite, we asked for pictures. What, what happened to them? Did you get any or did, who did that?
I don't know, that would be Susan. If anyone responded to the Evite for pictures, no.
Oh, okay. Nobody sent in their pictures. Okay, that's all right. So. A good time was had by all and we thank our volunteers for all the work that they do, which is important. So, so thank you to everybody. Um, it's moving on in our agenda, discuss improvements to the MBTA station. Um, Joe had asked to put this on the agenda, uh, a while back and then we had, um, and then Joe and Rob weren't there. We didn't have a full, full board, so we kinda pushed the agenda item off. Um, so in early April, we had a meeting, um, at the MBTA station. Rob and his work on the MBT Advisory Board, um, worked with, uh, Brian Kane from the MBTA Board and, and, um, Mayor Koch from, from Quincy. And we had a great discussion with them about the horrible status of the MBTA station in Ashland. And, um, you know, part of it is getting on the capital plan and advocating for Ashland and trying to get some, um, some funds to, to have them invest. Um, not only just for, for it to look nicer, but also for safety, because it's, it's, um, definitely a, a safety hazard over there as, as a person who takes the train, um, I could tell you. And, um, so Rob put together a, a, a letter at the end of April that we sent to, um, I think is a follow-up to, to Brian Kane. So I thought it would be good to have a discussion. Um, I know, like I said, Joe had asked to, to put this on the agenda. I don't know if Joe wants to add anything more specifically, but I figured, um, we would talk about sort of what, what the progress has been and then like next steps and how we can continue to advocate. So, Joe, do you wanna add anything?
Just real quick, man of chair, the, uh, their capital budget plan is already out and, uh, I did not see anything with respect to any funding coming our way. And, and that was really bothersome, because the three of us were there, we saw what was going on, they reheard, they heard us specifically. Uh, they seemed to be extremely concerned about it. I don't know if it was just, uh, lip service at that point in time. Uh, but it, it is, uh, it is very disappointing and discouraging that, uh, you drive by there on, on a daily basis. Even those folks that use it every day. Uh, it's really, uh, decrepit. It's, it's, it's falling apart. They don't maintain it. They don't clean the area around it. I mean, again, and I, and I referred it to, uh, uh, an old TV show with Sanford and Son over there, with all, with all the junk and stuff that's there. That's what it reminds me of. And, uh, if that's the way the, uh, the state views their properties, then we should entertain, uh, you know, having a serious discussion with, uh, Mayor Koch and, uh, Brian and maybe even, uh, Senator Spilka and, and Representative Lewis with respect to this, because it's, uh, it, it needs to be addressed and it needs to be rectified. I know Framingham gets all the monies, this, that and everything else for their, for their area. And we're one of the largest, uh, commuter rail, uh, stations in the area, if not the largest. So it, it really, it really bothers me. So I hope, I hope, uh, everybody else on the board agrees with that and we can try to meet with these folks sooner than later.
Can I just?
Yep.
Um, yeah, so I, 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 I don't think anyone disagrees with you, Joe. Uh, just to, to clarify the role. So Mayor Coke from Quincy is on the MBTA Board, but he's just one board member that we're basically trying to lobby. And, you know, Brian's the MBTA Advisory Board, which of course we're a member. But, um, in terms of the capital plan, the advisory board, you know, makes advisories and recommendations. And I believe they did include our comp, in the, the comments in need for capital plan. But it's the MBTA that does the capital plan and they're the ones we're lobbying, um, uh, in that case. So we knew it wasn't gonna be in the capital plan, because, uh, even at the time of that meeting, they had already presented to us that they hadn't included it. So there, of course, you know, there's just a lot of difficulties right now with the MBTA and the capital and the operating budgets. But, um, so I think, um, I just wanted to clarify the role of the advisory board. They're in our corner. Uh, but they're the ones just making recommendations really. Um, and so, um, I will, I'm, you know, happy to continue that, that process, uh, you know, when the commuter rail committee is gonna meet in the next couple of weeks. We're gonna get a presentation from, um, the MBTA on their operating plan. Um, I do wanna continue our own, as a group of communities, the comments and the, um, basically recommendations that we wanna make to the T. But as I think we understand, that's just one direction. And, you know, if we want to single out our station, uh, you know, I think there's other places, as I think Joe was talking about. Look, talking to Senator Spilka, Representative, um, Lewis. But, uh, you know, I'll, I, I certainly think we can keep up the pressure through the advisory board and their role with the T. But I think that's just one avenue and other things that we, you know, and Framingham made their own kinda special arrangement. Um, and we've always considered that and whether we wanna get back to that.
Yeah.
Anyway.
That's what I was gonna speak to. Uh, so totally with you, Joe, on this, it's outrageous that, uh, you know, that there hasn't been, after years and years of neglect, deterioration, uh, it's, it's just getting worse and worse. My own opinion is, we may wanna, instead of depending on the capital plan, we may want to, uh, revisit what we started a number of years ago with, uh, with Senator Spilka specifically in her office and meeting with the T. And, and at the time, Ed Carr was the head of the M W R T A and he was, he was the, the point person for getting their parking lot area assigned to the M W R T A. So it's, it was under their, their control and, and their management. And we were looking to do the same thing with our station, so that at least it was, you know, it, we, we could get it, uh, cleaned, we could get it, uh, um, proper, properly lit, we can improve the security of, of the station. And, uh, now that, that was a number of years ago when the station was filled every, every day. Now, now it's not. Uh, so my own preference would be maybe to revisit that. And, uh, maybe the timing is right for that now, with all the other issues that, that the, that the MBTA is going through. That might be something that they'll, they would maybe look more favorably on. So.
Yolanda?
The other thing, based on experience with other projects that we try to do, is you can't just do it from one angle. As, as Rob said, yes, we can keep going through the advisory board, but I think we as a board need to write directly to the MBTA, okay? We've looked at your capital plan, we're not included in that. So this is what we'd like to see moving forward. And it's, and, and it's advocacy, right? Think about the Route one twenty-six project. They didn't just put it on the tip. We had to go in, we had to meet with them, we had to advocate for it. So this could require more advocacy, not just from the, the advisory committee that Rob is on, but from us directly. The other thing we could do is reach out to our surrounding communities that use that station, so Holliston, Hopkinton and Southborough. Granted, Southborough has their own station, but it's rather small. And I'm sure there are people from Southborough that come to ours. And certainly Holliston and Hopkinton, when our station was full, people were coming from both of those communities. So if there's more advocacy that needs to happen, we need to reach out and get support from these other communities. So I've just made. So I've just made a note, certainly at my next Metro West Regional Collaborative meeting, I can say, look, we're looking to get some support for the train station in Ashland. Can we count on these other communities? I mean, potentially even people from Sharon might come, so. I think it's not just one way through the advisory, but we need to be, we need to keep being vocal. Yes, through the, through the Senator's office, do we want to look at the, the same template that they, that they did for the Framingham station with the MWR TA? With new leadership there, they might not want to do it right away, it might take some time for them to say, oh yeah, we want to do that. And certainly the revenue is not there like it was when the MWR TA took over the Framingham station, right? They took over that station, they made a big deal about it, they did all kinds of renovations. But the income isn't there at any of these stations and certainly not our station, to your point, Steve, you drive by there and it's empty, so.
It's not quite empty, but it's certainly down.
Yep.
That, that's a valid point, Yolanda and, and Rob. And I, and I would have, and I would have no problem going into the, going into the T. Especially where they keep saying that we are a commuter rail community. And, you know, they want us to continue to build so they can generate revenues at our expense. So, yeah, I don't have a problem, you know, going up there, knocking on their door and saying, you know, this is a two-way street or a two-way train. So let's, you know, let's call it like it is, I have no problem with that. You may not want me to go in there, but that's okay.
You gonna take the train in, Joe?
The way things have been right now, probably not, I'm probably driving, I'll probably get there a lot sooner.
Yeah, okay. So as far as like next steps, do we want to draft a letter to the MBTA? Like what, like how, because I kind of, I think Yolanda have, you know, going to talk to the Metro West Regional Collaboratives, that's a great idea. I think that that.
And, and they're kind of hooked into the NPO, right?
Yes.
And that's really important for the T is the NPO.
Or do you want to like reach out to them and then report back to us and maybe that, then we can work with the other communities?
Again, I think it's, I think it's a multi-pronged approach, right? I think we as a board should draft a letter saying, we've seen your capital plan and the station is not on it. And try to get dialogue back and forth with them going, what do we need to do to get this station on it? Because it is such an eyesore and there are safety issues that we're seeing.
I think we're due for a, a direct one-on-one with our legislative team as well.
That, that I think too.
We haven't done that in quite a while.
Yeah.
And we need to.
Disagree.
That, that should be part of the discussion.
Definitely.
Yeah, they've been looking at schedules.
Two big things, that, that, and then of course this, this quagmire of a process for the economic development bill that they refuse to. And I'm not blaming, this is, it actually has nothing to do with the State Senate because, because spending bills emanate from, from the House.
Well, and the Senate did their job.
So it's, but, you know, they're, at this point, they're, they're, they're at a, they're quagmire here, they won't go back to work and do the people's business.
So to that point, I think it is good to, to get on.
Yes, definitely get them on.
Let's get them on a calendar and we'll, we'll reach out to them.
Yeah, so they've, they've reached out recently to see when the board's meetings over the next couple of months.
And ideally it's the Senate, our Senator herself attending, not one of her representatives.
I believe she would, she would certainly make the effort to, to be here, certainly.
And I'll keep pushing it with, you know, with our meetings and see what we can do. But, you know, it may be worth going, well, let's, let's be, I think, kind of consulting with Senator Spilka would be a good.
Yeah.
Or we can draft a letter and then, you know, have her follow up with that, you know, on that letter.
Right, draft a letter, copy her, cap, cap, copy Rep. Lewis and.
Have a chat.
Yeah, that's a good direct action that you can take.
Yeah. I'm happy to draft it if somebody, unless somebody.
Yeah, I'll ask Brian, who would she go to?
Okay, that would be great.
If you want to draft and then we can review it and approve it at our next meeting.
Yep.
You know, Yolanda, with respect to you reaching out to other, other communities, reach out to the city of Marlboro. Because I know a lot of folks from Marlboro use our train station.
Well, Marlboro is part of the Regional Collaborative and their representative Katie Roby is pretty active, so she will be there for that discussion.
Okay, great.
All right, great. Does anybody else have any comments, questions, we're good? Okay. So our next item on the agenda is discuss participation in the hometown parade. Yolanda had asked to include this on the, on the agenda and so I will turn it over to you. I don't know if you had anything specific in mind or if you were just looking for us to get involved.
I just wanted us to have a discussion and I think as a board, I think, support this and see how we want to participate. I think it would be good for us to participate, I know different organizations that we're all involved in. I know the Lions are looking to participate, I believe Ashland Day is looking to support, participate. Even if it's just the five of us walking together, I don't know, but I think we should support this, I think it's a great idea. They're, they're doing a lot of research, they're doing a lot of reaching out and trying to include as many people as possible. The last count, I think they had either fifteen or twenty organizations that had committed. So I think it would be a great idea for us to participate as a board, just to be part of that hometown pride. And support, again, volunteers that are trying to do something good in our community.
And it's two o'clock, right?
It start, it starts at two, but it's, the gathering time is like one o'clock or one thirty and.
And they moved to the date, right?
Staging.
Yes, it's October, it's now October fifteenth, leaves from the train station, goes to Stone Park. And what's great is on that day is also the Fall Fest at the Corner Spot. So again, it's one, it's going to be one of those days, I think the farmer's market is.
It's our last day of the season.
It's the last day of, of the season. So as always, it's a lot of great things happening in town, so I, I think we should support it and we should walk as, as a group. Maybe include the town manager and assistant town manager if they want to walk.
You want, you want to, you want to walk?
You could ride.
Are you offering?
Ride how?
Get in the Jeep, put the top off.
Oh, get in the Jeep, put the top down.
I think that'd be fun.
So.
And I'm, I was just going to say, I'm not dressing up, I'm not playing a musical instrument, I'm not, you know, that's not my, that's not my thing.
What, no kazoo's?
No kazoo's, no, no costumes, no.
What do you think, Steve?
I mean, I know it's getting close to Halloween, but.
I'm going to withhold, I'm usually not at a loss for words here, but I'm going to, I'm going to reserve my thoughts right now.
Okay.
Well, Yolanda's asking for a commitment.
I would be willing to commit.
Okay.
As long as I don't have to dress up or play an instrument.
I think it can be just as simple as the five of us walking.
Okay.
And maybe if the town manager and assistant town manager. And/or if we can find two vehicles, right? I mean, if you want to do your Jeep, if we can find another vehicle that's a convertible and ride in that, that could be fun too.
Could be.
I mean, people know the town manager's Jeep, so.
Oh, yeah, there's even pictures of it.
Wow.
Thanks.
What do you say, Joe?
What do you think, Joe?
I, you know, I'm all for it. I'm trying to get my neighborhood to do a neighborhood group together and I know that's what the, the parade committee is looking to have. Neighborhoods get together and try to have like a competition amongst the neighbors, from one neighborhood to another to see who can get their step or whatever flow type of idea. And that's what brings the community all together and that's what Ashland Day was thirty-five years ago. You know, they're trying to restore something, some of that pride and sense of community now, I think it's a great idea.
My understanding, it's not a competition.
Oh, no, no.
There's no competition is my understanding, it's just encouraging people to participate.
Right, but you know it's going to happen, so that's okay. Nature of the beast.
Somebody's giving out awards, no kidding.
Officially, no awards.
No, 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 no awards, no awards. So Yolanda, do you want to let Kate and Gina and all the folks?
Sure, I will let them know, I'll fill out the form and let, I'll do the official filling out of the form if everyone's good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm like, Steve is speechless, really?
I think I will probably.
Steve, Steve, Steve wants a kazoo.
In fact, I might bring Otis.
There's a go.
That's a good idea, Otis.
You could bring Lucy.
No, Lulu, no, no.
Lulu, sorry, Lulu's.
No, I think, I think this is a, this is appropriate for, for Otis to attend to.
Sure.
Otis, Otis is more dignified than my dog, much more dignified.
Though, though, just a little, a little side note, so I did actually interview Kate on Around the Clock. And we talked about different things and I mentioned that when I was in the second grade, I took baton twirling lessons. And I actually remember marching in a parade with a baton. And she's like, well, maybe you can find people and I think if we just walk as a group, I don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
So I think that's a better route to go.
I don't know.
Because, because I don't even know that I still have a baton.
I was going to say, you could bring the baton.
Nothing that could be used as a weapon, I think.
Still have those hot hats?
Oh, man. Okay, all right, so Yolanda will let them know.
I will respond and, yep.
And we are, we are officially participating in the hometown parade on the fifteenth, so.
Great.
So thank you to Yolanda for, for, for encouraging us. And thank you for, thank you to, to Michael for possibly offering up his transportation.
Load on up, load up.
So anyway, so moving on in our agenda, update on inclusionary zoning. So just to kind of give a little bit of background for anybody watching, we had, as part of the housing production plan that we had approved, oh God. It was a while ago, I think it was a year ago May, so a year and a half ago at this point. Part of that housing production plan process was to, to develop an inclusionary zoning policy, a bylaw. Which would be a townwide bylaw that had a percentage of all development in Ashland. That would be, that would be required to have affordable housing. As we, we were kind of talking about a little bit before, the state mandates that we hit ten percent on affordable housing. We are currently, I think, about at six percent, we were a little bit higher and have slipped down on, on those numbers. And so the inclusionary zoning is just a tool, like one of the tools to, to be able to increase. You know, Joe was talking about a hundred chestnut and that ten percent, that, you know, that, that it bothered him that they were only going to ten percent. But that is, that's what they're required to do, so that's, you know, if we had an inclusionary zoning bylaw that required more than that. Then that would, that would have been something that would have changed the landscape of potentially that project. So the plan initially was to, we worked with MAPC and we had a couple of public forums. We had some, we had done a survey talking about what would be acceptable on inclusionary zoning. And the whole goal was to bring it to this past May's town meeting. And so as we got closer to town meeting, we realized that there was, that it was, it was, it's confusing. It's not the most simple thing to understand. It requires a, a little bit more education and a little bit more due diligence and input. And so, you know, we never felt like, we had the, the, the steering committee that had worked on this. You know, we thought we had kind of put together a, a good inclusionary zoning policy. But the feedback that we had received was that it was, it was feeling very rushed. So we tabled it and did not bring it to town meeting in May and the thought was that we were going to bring it for our November town meeting. Summer has, has happened and we had met as a committee once. And the whole thought was that we were going to do more outreach and more public education. And be able to take it both to the select board to really present and have a thorough discussion. As well as the planning board, way before we get to the point of putting it on the warrant. So, because I think that was, that was one of the, the issues is that when we went to the planning board, because it's a zoning bylaw. The planning board would have to vote to, to put it on the warrant. And at that point, the planning board was not comfortable with how it was written and how, didn't have, didn't have any input into how it was crafted. So we, we took it off the table in, in May and now we're kind of two months away from town meeting. And as we discussed it and it's, 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 we are still at a point where, you know, both the planning board has a lot on their plate right now. And the town has a lot on our plate right now. So we thought, you know, we want to do this right and we want to bring it forward to town meeting when, when we have the support of the community behind us. So we think it's probably in everyone's best interest to move it to May town meeting, to our annual town meeting. Because I think that gives us a little bit more time. We may work a little bit more with MAPC on some of the, some of the technical stuff to be determined. But, you know, I just wanted to let, sort of kind of let everyone know that we are, you know, we still think it's a very important thing for our community and, and an important tool. But we want to make sure we, we, we do this in the right way. So, so this won't be on, you know, when Jen was going through what our, our, and Michael was going through the, the warrant article list. Like it wasn't on there and it's not going to be on there. So I just wanted to kind of give some, some information on that and see if there was any comments or questions from everybody.
Yeah, well, kind of a question, you know, go back, I mean, sorry. So as you may remember that one of my reservations was that it's a townwide kind of zoning change without any kind of, without a review of like, without identifying areas that we think, you know, that housing development is appropriate for. So kind of going back to Joe's point about when these developers come in for apartments and we don't have a tool other than just urging them. And the inclusionary zoning would of course require that they go to at least twenty-five percent, which I think is, is a good thing. I think my reserve, and just my reservation is, you know, let's, let's focus on what areas that people agree are appropriate for housing development. And refine it that way and I think you'll, you'll at least identify the areas and maybe kind of address people's concerns about, you know, building so much housing everywhere. At least say like 126 or these other parcels that we're aware of or maybe should be aware of. They did, I thought, a very nice survey of one MAPC years ago. They identified a bunch of parcels or areas that we thought were appropriate. I'd kind of like to see that as part of this and I think that would help get support. I mean, I know people don't want to say, oh, this is discriminatory or, or whatever. But I, I think it's really housing in general that we're talking about and every time there's housing, we should have inclusionary zoning. So I guess that's, you know, we've, I've talked about that before, I guess that's kind of where I'm still at in looking at this, but anyway, so.
So I, so I think it's a wise path that you're taking and not to, you know, clearly, I think there's a, a lot to understand about inclusionary zoning. And, you know, Rob's pointing out, you know, a, a way to look at it, I don't necessarily subscribe to that. But that's, that's a whole nother conversation. But I guess my comment is how does this all tie into what we're on the verge of starting, which is a strategic slash comprehensive plan? That incorporates so many facets of growth, development and housing. So, you know, I know the timelines aren't going to match up, I, I realize that. But it's, all seems to be connected here and, you know, how do we best make it mesh, I guess?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a good, it's a good question and, you know, from my perspective, just, you know, to address like, you know, Rob's concern is like, the, the development's going to come. Like if we don't own the property and we, the development, we have very limited control based on the current zoning. Whatever the current zoning is, is, is the law. So the housing is, we're not going to say, you know, we're not going to be able to control, you know, if, if Shaw's, this Shaw's project kind of moves forward and they decide to, to go to planning board, you know, the affordability component is not, we, we, you know, it, it's ten percent. That's what, that's what they're required to do in that, I think, over, right, it's ten percent in.
In the Pond Street earlier, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, that's going to be, so anything above and beyond is negotiated. And so whatever, you know, we're able to negotiate is great. But inclusionary zoning is not going to create more development. Like it's just going to give us more affordable housing for the development that's already coming. So it, you know, I think that's part of the education process is making people understand that it's not, we're not encouraging development. We're just encouraging more affordable housing when there is development. So, you know, if, if we wanted to, if we wanted to restrict where development was happening, that's a zoning. So, um, you know, if, if we wanted to, if we wanted to restrict where development was happening, that's a zoning change. So, that's like a whole different discussion, if we want to not have development in certain parts of town, so.
So, I, yeah, there's a lot to discuss about this.
Yeah. Yolanda?
Yeah, so I, I agree. I think waiting until May would make sense. I think there's a lot of work that could be done. I think inclusionary zoning is important, and part of it is because it is inclusionary. It covers your home, whole town. It doesn't identify one area or another. If there's areas that can be developed, it covers all of that. The other thing is, we don't have it now. Do we wanna wait and let it work with our comprehensive plan process? I don't know. That, I think that's part of the discussion we could have. Rather than push through the inclusionary zoning and then work on our comprehensive plan, might it make sense to tie the two together? I'm not sure, but I think it's a question that we need to ask. But I do think waiting until, at lea- minimum till May, with some further education, makes sense, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Joe, do you have anything that you wanted to, to add? You're good? Okay. Okay.
Good.
Alright. Thank you, guys. Um, so the next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the planning board regarding comprehensive plan. Is this just kind of talking about, do we have a date?
So, September fifteenth, or fourteenth, excuse me, is going to be the date that's a joint meeting with the planning board. And, um, so really, that's all I wanted to update the board on now.
Are we doing, is it, um, are we doing it a hybrid, or are we, what's?
Still have to work that out.
Okay.
Um, I think it'd be great to do it in person, but I know some, some members, that might be very, very difficult.
Yeah, they've been doing, they've been doing their meetings by Zoom, haven't they?
Yeah, they haven't gone back to, to in-person meetings.
Starting at seven?
Starting at seven, correct.
What's that?
It's so convenient sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, and we'll be reviewing, so the last, the last communication that, so we had sent that, at the last joint meeting, um, you had put together a proposal, um, back to the planning board, and they had responded back, and we had talked, but we haven't had sort of a, um, sort of a formal process of coming to a consensus with the planning board. So, the, the purpose of this meeting is really to, um, to hopefully get to consensus. And I know the idea was that we were, um, hoping to be able to get a consultant, get an RFP out, all that, you know, and, and sort of still put that in forward to town meeting for November. Is this, that's still hope, the, the hope, if we can get to, if we can get to consensus next week?
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. Um, that would be really, really difficult, though, at this point in time. I mean, September fourteen, yeah, it would be really, really difficult.
Well, I thought we were moving ahead with that understanding that we try to get moving in the special and do a pretty straightforward RFP, or at least get the funding for it.
We can at least get the funding. We could at least, but, I mean, having an RFP in hand, like, having a proposal in hand.
But I, I think the key thing, I thought we wanted at least be able to move ahead with the funding and then after town meeting, continue.
So, I mean, if we can get to consensus.
Yeah. I think if we can get to consensus and then do a, you know, not to exceed number and bring that to town meeting, I think that would make sense. So, that way, everything is moving forward and then we can get the funding at town meeting, if that's what we need to do, so that the project, we don't lose our forward momentum. Cause if we have to get town meeting approval, otherwise we're waiting until May for town meeting funding, and that doesn't make sense.
Okay. Alright, so next week, so next Wednesday, the planning board's aware of the dates. Okay, alright.
And you'll send out the most up, the last information and changes or recommendations?
Yeah, I don't think it's changed since the last time the board talked about it, but, um.
If you could send it as a separate gen- agenda slash backup, thank you.
Joe, did you have anything before we moved on? No, you're good? Okay. Um, so we already approved our consent agenda, moving on to priority project updates. Um, do you have anything on downtown?
Yeah, so downtown, um, as people know, they, they're starting, they've finished up, or they're close to finishing up all the sidewalks on Front Street. Um, they've started moving towards Main Street and doing that work as well, so they've started on the eastern side of Main Street. They've started putting in the curb. Um, after a couple of days of doing curb work, they'll follow behind with the, with the concrete and finish that up. Um, I do have good news about the license agreement from the MBTA. Uh, so we finally received that license agreement, so we can start planning on working on jacking under the tracks.
Oh, nice.
Um, so that's good. And, uh, the other thing is, people have probably seen Eversource trucks going through and, uh, pulling, pulling cable. Comcast is going to be doing the same thing here pretty soon. They're gonna do work on Front Street. They really can't do Main Street until the jacking under the tracks is done. But once that's completed, that'll be another utility, uh, that, you know, we don't have to worry about, at least, uh, in terms of pulling, um, stuff through conduit, cable through conduit. The last remaining one is Verizon, so, and we, we seem to have issues with Verizon responding to various Town of Ashland projects and, and helping us with that. I should point out, it's not just Town of Ashland, it's, it's other communities as well, but, I've been very disappointed.
Any, any potential for asphalt paving this season?
Yeah, so we did get good news on the granite, and that the granite's going to be, um, delivered probably in the next couple of weeks as opposed to October. So, that bodes well for us being able to pave before the end of the year.
Oh, nice.
To get that, get the curbing.
So, when you say paving, paving all the areas that have been curbed?
Correct. So, Main Street, Front Street, and I believe Summer Street's getting paved too.
Oh, super. That'll be great before winter.
And is that final paving, or?
It'd be the final pave.
Okay. And we're gonna do that, making sure we have no other ripping up or digging to do, correct?
Yes. You never know what Eversource is gonna do. Um, but, it, it wouldn't be related to our project, let's put it that way.
Okay.
I thought we had a bylaw that once we paved, they couldn't do anything, no construction work could be done for three years.
Um, I believe that one might be two, Joe, but I think emergencies, they, they would be exempt.
Because you're right, Yolanda. They, once they pave, it's like, oh, we need to do this, cause they don't coordinate, and then they dig up the road again. Yeah.
And what is the date that the asphalt companies usually kinda shut down for the winter?
November.
November, okay, so it would have to be done in October.
Yeah, sometimes they, sometimes they'll keep them open longer, depending on how the weather is. But generally, uh, or November's when they, when they shut those down.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, public safety building, Jen, would you wanna give an update on that?
Sure. So, I think Mark has, I think that Mark has actually left, but he had asked, um, initially, our substantial completion date was the end of this week. Uh, we are waiting on a couple of deliveries, uh, most importantly, are the apparatus doors, and that will be coming early, hopefully, early next week, and our generator. Um, so we'll be working, um, through those issues, uh, probably by the end of the month. And then our furniture is actually being delivered, um, the first few weeks of October, so moving in. Um, hopefully, um, what we're looking at, we're still waiting for a date from State 911, which is they're really gonna drive our cutover date. That's when, um, dispatch will move over and they'll make the connection, and that's when all the calls to the, um, dispatch center will start to come to the new building. So, we're waiting on a date for that, but we're looking at mid-October, and then they will stagger in. Um, so they're continuing to work, um, they've punch listed the, uh, third floor and the second floor. Um, still working on some finishes on the first floor, working on all the site work, doing the wetlands replication. Um, but it is stern to sort of come together as the building, um, that was designed and planned for, so it's really exciting.
Timing, potential date for opening slash ribbon cutting celebration for the community?
Yeah, so we're still, um, discussing that at the committee level. We want to give some time. Um, there will be, obviously, the way these buildings work is that they'll be built, they'll have some punch list items. We wanna be, make sure that operationally, um, we give the department some time to sort of work out all those kinks and then invite the community.
Yeah. We did talk about having a, uh, one meeting devoted just to the dedication ceremony and the, uh, uh, open house procedure as well. So, we're anticipating, I mean, at this point, I think November is gonna be the most likely timeframe, given the deliveries of, uh, furniture and transition of the departments into the building. But, uh, you know, right now, uh, Joe and I went on a tour today, and Michael as well, and it's, uh, you know, the inside is, uh, really, uh, coming along. There's still punch list stuff, plenty of things to, to fix, to clean up and so on, but, uh, you know, it's subs- it significantly, I'm not gonna say substantially, significantly complete. Uh, they're starting to do landscaping, uh, trees have been delivered, ready, you know, staged to be installed. Uh, so it's, it's moving along. The monuments from downtown have moved over, and they've been positioned, they're on, uh, their own, they're in their, they're positioned, and, uh, so it's, as I say, moving along.
I would just say that when you pick a date, make it far enough in advance that people can plan for it, and, cause I think for a lot of people, it's gonna be a big deal. They're gonna wanna be there, they're gonna wanna see the building. So, that would all be my recommendation.
They're not gonna be on the same day. The open house and the dedication will probably be during the week. And, uh, open house would probably be on Saturdays, you know, for residents. So, we, we're, we haven't, we haven't farm, you know, finalized, we haven't discussed it at all. Tentatively, that's how we're gonna break it up.
So, the dedication would be on one day?
Be during the week, yeah.
Okay. Um, so that's public safety building update. Really don't have too much on the Mendez School. Um, we did have some rain yesterday, which, uh, you know, created, uh, created a, a little bit of an issue there, which is being, um, addressed, but, um, other than that, construction's still moving on. Still looking, still looking good.
My understanding is, second floor concrete has been poured. I'm sure with the rain the last couple of days, that has hampered them a little bit. But I know that they're moving forward, and the goal is still next August that it'll be available.
Yeah, in time for the kids to move in.
Yep.
So, that would be great. Um, okay, Valentine project. Um, so first off, I think at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about some of the land work that had done, been done there by volunteers, so, um, that's continuing to look good. But, um, I wanted to talk with the board a little bit about something that came up when we are looking at doing, repairing the roof and the found, the foundation and that back corner post. So, the company that is doing the, um, doing the work i- is a company called, um, Mill City. So, they, when they came in to do their pre-construction meeting, and they met with Doug, one of the things they asked is, so why are you spending all this money just to do a temporary fix? What we could do is, we could actually deconstruct, for the same amount of money, we'd deconstruct the, um, the barn and re, repour a new foundation. So, I said, oh, well, that's, that's interesting, right? But knowing how precarious it can be when you start taking buildings down and everything like that, um, this is the best meeting to talk about it. Um, I asked them to look at a different, um, you know, maybe a different approach, which would be renovating it in place. Um, and so, they have gone back and they've, they've worked with a structural engineer, and I need to get more details about it, but, um, what they are contemplating would be to leave the existing foundation in place and go ahead and essentially sandwich that foundation with new foundation. Um, it sounds like something similar to what Paul was talking about, was done decades ago with the hall house, and pin the existing foundation against that. Um, they would continue, they would install the new footings, um, with the columns in the basement to replace the existing columns. They'd still replace the corner post, and they would redo the roof. Um, but what they would also do is they would replace the clappard sheathing, replace any of the pieces that needed to be replaced, like the rafters, um, and then also replace the floor. So, they wouldn't do that, obviously, for the same amount of money, but, um, but, you know, I said, you know, go ahead and, and start working on a price for what this would be, because I think a lot of the specifics need to be worked out, and, cause I think that's one of the things we learned from four thirty-three Chestnut, is we probably need to get some more specifics related to, to some of these projects. But I think it would be important to consider, you know, the possibility of doing that work, um, if the price comes in reasonable, w- within the monies that we have allocated as for the Valentine property, if that makes sense.
So, you, you, they're proposing a foundation, a new foundation, that butts the old foundation?
Well, on each side. So, it, it sandwiches it.
So, sa- so, there's a new fa- so, i- is it changing the size of the barn?
It wouldn't be changing the size of the barn. So, what would happen, the, it would be, there would be an interior piece of the foundation, so you wouldn't see that. The exterior one on the foundation would actually be below grade.
Okay.
So, you wouldn't.
So, you would visually see the old foundation from outside the, the barn?
Yeah.
And the corner beams and all of the structurals would still be on the old foundation?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the weight would be bearing on the new foundation, but you would still be seeing the old, old foundation.
Okay.
Which, I, you know, I don't know if that's, I mean, that foundation is such a mishmash of different, different things.
It'll be interesting to see what their proposal is. I mean, it makes sense to get a, a more substantial finished product than just a Band-Aid, which is what we're, what we asked them to do.
And, and the work that they were talking, they would, you know, be doing would be, um, again, the clappard is what's existing there right now, so it'd be replace, the same type of what they would, wood clappard. Um, they would be using rough, rough sawn lumber for some of that work, uh, the floorboards and things like that.
So, what's the process to make a change like this, you know, significantly different?
Still have to work that out.
Okay.
And as part of their proposal, you're saying replace the flooring in the barn on the first level and in the loft area? Again, it's historical, so would we, as part of their proposal, or are we gonna ask them to sh- to show it to us with using reclaimed boards, or possibly taking the flooring that's there, refinishing it and putting it down? I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that could be done, and I know this is still in the process and, and still being looked at. Um, but I guess my, my, my question is, and my comment is, if we're gonna make this change, um, and this is something they're gonna propose, then maybe we have them come in and talk to us about why they're recommending this and what they see, but how we can keep it looking historical and remain historical, um, moving forward.
Yeah, that would not be a bad idea. So, here's the thing, though. Obviously, while we wait to get that stuff in place and have it, we're not moving forward with the roof and the foundation.
Right.
So, is the board comfortable with that?
I mean, what's the timeline that they're supposed to get back to?
Um, with a little bit more detail, probably the beginning of next week. Um, I don't know if it's gonna be.
For our next meeting, potentially?
We could potentially have them in for the next meeting.
So, the, the initial, they were initially gonna start work on this, like, now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, would they be able to, I mean, I guess one of the questions is, like, are they able, so if, if, you know, between the time that they come back with the, the scope of work and a cost, and that they come to us, or you come to us, or however we review it, approve it or not approve it, um, is there time this winter to get that work done, like, from a timing perspective, that they're able to do that? Because I think part of the reason that we wanted to do the, the, the foundation and the roof now was because we wanted to have it, like, done for winter. So, um, so I would say that. And my other comments are, um, you know, we were talking about mass historical, you know, I, I kinda, I feel like, I feel like it would be great if we can, if we can get the work done on the, the Valentine barn, because I think that would be, that would be great. I just, I, I worry about losing the historical part of it, like, what they're doing. And if, you know, we need an expert to weigh in on it, to make sure that their proposal is sound from a, from a historical perspective and, um, you know, or how, however we need to do that, I think is. And also, you know, talking about four thirty-three Chestnut, just making sure we're tight as to what happens if the barn falls down? What happens if, if, um, you know, what's, what are they, what are they responsible for? And what is the oversight, and what is the, the consequences if X, Y, Z happens? Like, I'm just, I'm very hesitant about, like, just having some, you know, just saying, oh, now that they can do the whole project. I, I just, I, I would love for it to be done, absolutely. I just, um, I don't want us to, to, to dig deeper into this.
Yeah.
And, and, you know.
Well, take steps, we can't take that.
Yeah.
Can, you think they'll be able to speak to us at our next meeting?
Um, I can certainly ask.
Yeah.
Um, why don't I, you know, Um, why don't I, you know, bringing up all these points is really, really good, because, um, I mean, the more I hear, the more I, I s- I think for the board to feel comfortable moving forward with this, I think a lot of detail and a lot of questions need to be asked. So it might make more sense just, you know, I hate to say this too, but it might make more sense to just go ahead and start with the repairs and do that and get that, get that done.
Can they do the repairs, but then go back and do the other things, if that makes, you know, if that helps support what they're doing? And if they're gonna fix, you know, they're gonna fix the foundation, but then does it make sense to do the, the sandwiching that they're talking about?
It's, it's different work and, and so for this proposed work that they're doing, they're talking about doing the whole foundation, whereas the repairs really like the back third.
Right.
And, at least at the ex- the exterior facing foundation. You know, I can talk to them some more, see kind of what they're talking about from a price perspective.
And what happens once they start getting into the roof area and they find, you know?
Rot, all that.
Yeah, they find lots of other issues that need to be addressed at that point in time, so, um, you know, I, I certainly, you know, appreciate, you know, Brandy, what Brandy said. And I think that should be, uh, of vital importance to the board, that we don't get into another scenario like four thirty-three, potentially. And I'm not suggesting that four thirty-three isn't repairable at this point, we don't know that yet, but, you know, I think for us to start out and not be comfortable is, you know, pre- pretty important, you know?
Get us far down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joe, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I, I don't disagree with the, the conversation as it's heading, but I, I am a little concerned about the fact that the final use of that, that barn, as to what we potentially wanna use it for. Do we wanna use it for a community events or other, uh, you know, things of that nature? And if we, we put a Band-Aid on the, uh, the foundation, on, on small repairs or what, what we're looking at to do with repairs, is that gonna be structurally sound enough to do the things that we would like to do in the future? And, and, and I think, Michael, that even if it takes a week to get those, those prices in, um, and hopefully they're within, within reason. I mean, I, I think the foundation is, is, is paramount, more than anything else. I mean, you have a good foundation, you can build anything. If you have a very weak foundation, it's, it's just gonna be for looks and you're not gonna be able to utilize the building down the road for what you really w- wanna do, and it may cost you more money down the road to, to get it in, in a, in a usable way for us to use it, you know, for our community-based, uh, events and things of that nature, so. Um, you know, a week delay, yeah, a week delay is a week delay, but at the same token, at least we'll have something that's gonna be viable and usable down the road.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's all I think, yeah.
I agree, Joe.
Just, um, Michael, how are you able to entertain us? I mean, are there, are there funds available, like presumably if they were to do a more thorough job, it's gonna be more.
Well, yeah, well, the board had, um, planned for using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds for this, plus there's the hundred and something thousand in CPA funds as well.
So it's possible they could come in next week or sometime with some kind of plan that we could actually afford to do soon?
Well, yes, they could come in with a plan, and p- potentially it could be something that we could afford. I don't think it's going to be a plan that's gonna have the details and, um, the details and contingencies in place that I think the board's gonna feel comfortable with, I, 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 mo- moving forward, I think that's gonna take a little more time.
So my, my comments, um, are, you know, related to, to what Joe was saying, I mean, if we we put the, we do the Band-Aid approach, and what happens next? And, you know, it's taken us X number of years to get to this spot, and, you know, what happens after that? Is it more desirable to have it there, Band-Aided? Or, or substantially further along in a, in a reconstructed manner? And, you know, who's to say, I'm like, I, none of us can speculate how long it's gonna take for either the town to, um, develop the funding or an outside entity to develop the funding to do the, do with the, uh, property that I think we all understood, that we wanted to see at the property when we bought it, right? So that's one comment, the other thing, uh, Michael, is, you know, I know our building commissioner is, is experienced with this kind of work as well. Can he provide us with some guidance on, you know, his interpretations and so on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yolanda?
So, to Steve's point and even to Joe's point, right, something we've been talking about since we purchased this property was, what the heck are we gonna do with it? And there's been all kinds of ideas and we've never gotten anywhere. And I know this is something Rob is interested in, you know, do we look at reconstituting some kind of committee for the Valentine property? And have, you know, finally figure out what we're gonna do with this? I mean, I think it's great that we're talking about spending the funds to get the barn rehabilitated and make it look nice again, but if we don't know what we're gonna do with it and it's just gonna sit there, then it's gonna deteriorate again if it's not being used. So if not at the next meeting, maybe at the first one in October, we look at reappointing a committee, I mean, I've been thinking, it's like, okay, this is important to all of us, but we don't all have the time to say, okay, what are we gonna do with this? And I think there are people in our community who want to help make that decision. I also want to encourage, and I did this at our forum, there's people who have been talking of five oh one three C. Go ahead, have you gotten that started to help get funding and let there be that public-private partnership between the town and that organization to do something. I mean, one thing I've always said, and I said this to Michael, the Historical Society in Holliston has that old barn and the house. Now, they've owned it for a while and they added a kitchen back in the seventies. We have a house and a barn, you know, what, what is the minimum we can do to start doing something with that property? And what is that gonna look like? Because we've been having this conversation, no decision has been made, and we keep going around and around. So I, I want us to make a decision as to what we're gonna do with that property.
So I think that's important, but I think the decision has to be realistic and it has to be feasible.
I agree.
And, um, I think that is what happens, that's where the disconnect happens a lot of times, is, you know, we have no shortage of ideas, just sitting at this table
Right.
of what to do, and so the community doesn't have a shortage of ideas, I think there's some great ideas, but they have to actually be able to be implemented, that's the thing. And, and I take it with like a private development project, let's take the Mill Buildings, right? So everybody, I mean, there's some great ideas out there to, it'd be great to have it as like seventy-five percent commercial and twenty-five percent residential, it'd be great.
Financially, that's not feasible for the developer.
Be great to do it like as a, as a museum or something, but it's not, nobody's gonna finance that.
Right.
So, again, I think, you know, w- we've, we've already discovered one limitation in terms of the Valentine property in terms of the fact that we can't, we can't sell it and we can't necessarily lease it. So I, and I think the other, so we've got that limitation on it, at the same time, we've got the limitation of i- if we're gonna run, if, if we're gonna own it, we're gonna have to run and operate it in some way, shape or form. Some, and so how do you do that? You, you've gotta have a plan.
Right.
So not only a plan of what to do with it, but how you're going to maintain it moving forward, that's feasible and sustainable. So I think that's, that's important.
But I, but I think there are models that we can look at, which is what the original committee was doing. They looked at different things that said, okay, we could do it like this, we could do it like that, you know, so. I, I'm proposing that at one of our next meetings, you know, maybe a month out, we try to reconstitute the committee and, and get something solid.
We, we went through that process, why would we wanna do that all over again? When we had a viable committee committed and dedicated to exploring numerous ideas and numerous models, so why is it different today? I don't understand, they went out, we went out with, with, uh, with requests for, for proposals. Uh, we, we got one interested party and one proposal, proposal wasn't well received. You know, what's gonna be any different today? And forget about the five oh one C three part for a second, because I think, you know, that is, you know, i- this, this project is gonna take a significant amount of money. And that's to me, where is the money gonna come from? You know, is the town in the position to, uh, you know, to essentially finance a project that I think that the community envisioned when we agreed to buy it? I, I don't know, maybe, maybe we are, I don't know how many communities actually do something like that. You know, the, the, the Thayer Homestead in Medway, they bought for a song and a dance and put money into it.
They bought it for, I think it was like a million, and then they, they bought it for a million, I believe, and then they had to put in, I believe, three point two.
Okay, but that, we, we, we started at three and a half.
Right.
Right? So, you know, I'm, I'm not, y- y- you know, if the committee, if, if there's interested people in the community that wanna reconstitute the, uh, a committee like that, I'm, I'm all for it, I really, I really am. I'm not quite sure what's gonna accomplish that hasn't been accomplished before.
Well, I think we have different information than we had when we initially put this, the, the committee in place. I think that some of the people who constituted that committee, I think some of the information that came out of it, some of the further discussions that have happened since that committee, that's what the difference is. And we, we need to make a decision on the property. And I don't know that the five of us have the time or the bandwidth, or even our, um, town management and our town staff have the bandwidth. So someone needs to be doing the work, and I believe there are enough people in this community who wanna see something happen with that property. And in regards to the five oh one three C, you're like, well, where is the funding gonna come? A lot of organizations who have five oh one three Cs, who are nonprofits, raise money to go into building projects.
Yeah, I'm not, I just asked you to put that to the side for a moment, because I know very clearly that a lot of organizations are viable
Right.
and are motivated and are able to accomplish those goals. I haven't seen any of that, anything, any movement at all in that direction from the folks that have expressed that concept.
And I think part of that is because we haven't given enough commitment to support that.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I, I think, well, so, so I think that we're not, we, we can't wait on the, on the barn repairs for us to figure out what this is gonna look like, because I, I think, I think the barn will fall down before we, you know, so I think we have to.
I agree, I don't think we need to wait, I think we should get the information as to how we're gonna get the barn fixed up. But as part of that, we have to decide what are we going to do with it?
I don't think it's gonna be part of that decision, I honestly don't think, I don't think it is.
I'm not saying it has, again, it doesn't have to be one and then the other, right? We can decide what we're gonna do with the barn to make sure it's still standing in a hundred years. And at the same time, start the discussion again as to what we're gonna do with it.
And so when we had our public forum, like, I think the, the next steps were peo- we were gonna get feedback on, on the cap.
Kate Valentine's plan.
Kate Valentine.
Right.
You know, proposal.
Yeah.
And then figure out, then reconvene as another, you know, have another forum and have the discussion. And I think, I think it's, I think it would be great to have a committee that, that, you know, and the Valentine committee still exists, like, we never dissolved it, it still exists. You know, we could make a decision to appoint a couple more people to it and have a full committee, they just don't have a charge right now, so. Because the charge was to, to basically determine what the next steps were for the, the property, which they did.
So if it's getting feedback on Kate Valentine's proposal, it is up on the website, it has been talked about, so it sounds like we need to then have a s- a, a follow-up forum to get people's feedback on that and the feasibility of that.
So, but the, the definite feedback from the forum was that we need to fix the barn, to make sure that it doesn't.
Right, I, and I agree, and again, it doesn't have to be one and then the other, we can be doing these things simultaneously.
So. Just, uh, you know, I just wanna say, I, I, I support the direction Yolanda's going, I mean, we do have a short-term decision to make, which, and maybe we should think about getting a more comprehensive plan, because it may make sense with or without a committee. But I, I think it's really important to pursue this idea of what is the long-term vehicle? That we're not necessarily the best vehicle to get into all these details or think about fundraising or use or things like that, so. You know, if we, I, I, I support what Yolanda's saying, that in a couple meetings, we should think about, you know, maybe have a fuller discussion and appoint, and appoint or reappoint, we've got several people not on that committee that have been very involved and others that we can consider, so, you know. I, I think I support moving ahead with getting some committee, at least to help, and Michael, how much time are you spending on the details of this?
So tha- that's the thing, I, I know, so what would the committee do? Because we ultimately end up doing a lot of the work, okay? Like, that, and that's, that's just a, a fact.
At least maybe they can take some of that off your shoulders, or, you know, like any committee does, you know?
I don't know, I, I thought we had kind of a, a plan on how to determine what the best use was, we had the Kate Valentine proposal up there, we talked about doing like a feasibility study, you know, moving forward.
That's right, I think we should move ahead with that.
But, and, you know, what we're talking about in terms of repairing the barn, it doesn't, I mean, that type of work is gonna have to be done no matter what the plan is, in terms of use. That's, that type of work is gonna have to be done. And I think also there's, eh, there's just, um, I don't know, i- it's, there's the preservation restrictions, the conservation restrictions that have to be.
The elephant in the room is very clear, to me, and that is the fact that we're hamstrung by Article ninety-seven designation and, and the restrictions that it places on the capacity to do a lot of, a lot of things. And, you know, unless we're willing to, um, I think, uh, uh, address that or attempt to address it, and, you know, uh, we, we should be skeptical of, of success, I think, but, you know, unless we're willing to pursue that, then, you know, this is just gonna be a circular conversation, I think, for quite a while.
Not convinced we need to get rid of that, or that it's worth, or it's even feasible to go that route.
And if we don't do it soon, I believe my understanding is within the next legislative segment, they are gonna change and make it even harder.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, though, we gotta get that thing fixed.
Right, and, and I agree with that, so, I mean, if that was, if that's what this discussion is about, then yes, I agree. Let's get the, the updated information from Mill City as to what they think they can do, and at minimum, let's at least get the foundation and the roof done. But again, to their point, and they're the ones who said this to you, Michael, is we can put a roof on it, but if the foundation, if the beams that support the roof aren't gonna support a new roof, you're just making a bigger mess than what you already have, so.
So we'll, we'll, we'll have some more information at our next meeting, yeah. All right, Joe, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Madam Chair, I appreciate that, uh, I apologize, uh, I just blew a light bulb, so.
I was gonna say, you're, you're in the dark there, there you go.
So, so I'm in the dark, anyhow, um, I, I think the, the plan of attack is, is, is the right way to go. You need, you need to do the repairs, i- if you're gonna do it, do it right the first time. And then no matter what we do down the road, it'll be, it'll be ready for whatever we have to do, or whatever the townspeople wanna do with it. And, um, I just, Michael, you mentioned something about the fact that they were gonna put a new found, a foundation beside the old foundation, so are they gonna use the old foundation like a facade?
Yeah.
To, to block up the new foundation, I just, I just wanna get that clear in my mind.
Yeah, it's kinda sandwiched, so there would be two, um, so think of the existing foundation, they would pour a concrete foundation on the inside, that they would pin that foundation, the existing foundation to.
Interesting.
And then also they would pour one on the outside, below grade, uh, of a c- concrete one, outside below grade.
And, and that would support any and all work above, above ground.
Correct.
For that barn, okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that, then I think that's the approach we need to take. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
I know, I know, there you go, Joe, there we go. Anything else under the priority project, you have anything for?
Can I just ask them a question about, you brought the feasibility study, which I, I think we all thought that was a good idea, are we, what, are we moving ahead with it, what do you think?
I was waiting to get more feedback on Kate Valentine's plan, we need to have another forum, but right now I've been focused on trying to get this repair done, so.
Well, I, I thought the feasibility study could be done independently, it was just gonna, it was gonna give us information.
Yeah, but there's, you still have to go through the process of picking somebody out, procuring it, all, all that stuff takes time. Well, this is a good discussion, so.
We just have too much going on in town.
We do have a lot going on. We do have a lot going on, so we do.
So is this helpful? Do you have a plan with these guys now, or?
This, this is helpful, it, it's, it's not necessarily clear, but I've got more information. Yeah.
Five different perspectives, so good luck to you, okay.
It's, no, i- it's good points that I think have been raised, so. Um, do you want me to just run into?
Town manager reports?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
First of all, the reservoir level, I know everybody is, uh, waiting, wondering if we, um, how we did on the reservoir. Um, we did not get back up to two hundred and ninety-four feet, unfortunately, we're, um, as of this afternoon, we're at two ninety-three point eight. So, um.
So still in stage two?
We're still in stage two, um, and we've got it, we've bought it, at least the rain gave us a couple weeks before we have to turn on the emergency connection. One thing I wanted to, uh, to bring up, um, I don't think Chief Rossi is still on here, but, um, one of the things that she has been working on is a replacement for our auxiliaries. Um, and so she's been working with Sergeant Vincula on a program called a Traffic Officer Program, so we should have more information about that in the near future. And I think in general, probably in a couple months or so, I'll ask her to come and, and just give the board an update on, on what she's been working on and the work that she's been doing. I do, uh, do wanna let you know that the next issue of Ashland Access, the digital, the digital version of, of that quarterly newsletter is planning on, uh, coming out, um, I believe, uh, in October. So Brandy and I talked a little bit today about the possibility of having like a, a select board a piece in there, and Brandy, I think you volunteered to
To write something, so I, I, we talked about just kinda giving an update of, of what's on the horizon and what we're working on, and also I think it's good to just have a summary of like bigger things that are happening in town. Um, also I said to Michael, you know, I really wanna promote like our email address and how to contact us and who we are, because I think that's important, I don't think people kinda know how to contact us, and I don't think we, I don't think we get enough emails, so.
You need a good selfie of the board, I've got a few.
Oh, maybe we'll, maybe we'll take a.
I'll send you a couple, too, all right?
There we go, yeah, there we go, sounds, sounds good. Is that, is there anything that, that you guys, is there anything specific that, that you would want?
Yeah, put our salaries on, on, uh, in the article.
My, 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 uh, my high-powered, uh, volunteered position. I'm, 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 I'm voting myself a raise, no, okay.
Careful.
No, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Well, it's three percent of zero.
It's three percent of zero, it's still zero. I get paid in love.
And appreciation?
And appreciation. So, um, okay, so, um, so thanks for, for letting us know that that's, uh, that's, that's coming out.
Absolutely. Um, a little bit of sad news, uh, so many of you know our human resources director, Lisa Uliolooro. She has decided to take a position with the town in Norwood, um, as their HR director. So, um, obviously a loss for us, um, she's been here for almost four years. It's hard to believe, time certainly flies, so through, you know, the pandemic and all of that good stuff, so. Uh, we certainly wish her, well, her last day is gonna be September thirtieth. And, um, we're in the process of advertising for a new HR director, so we've started that process. And then finally, I just wanted to, uh, commend Raj and our Board of Health and, um, or a lot of our workers on these vaccine clinics that they've been having, um, here in Town Hall. So they've, uh, I think today they vaccinated fifteen kids, um, who haven't been able to get their vaccinations, so that allows them to go to school, you know, do a bunch of activities. We have a, a shared public health nurse, Jess, who, who does, uh, work with us as well. It's just a really good idea and a really good program that they've got going on, so I just wanna give a shout out to them for that.
He's really been a good addition, I think, to the, to the team, he's, uh, you know, my, I've had a, several, um, interactions with Raj over, since he's been here, you know, through either the farmer's market or up at the community center, and, you know, he's, he's just easy to work with. And he's by the book, and, but he's always got a solution to a- apply to the situation. So he, he really has been a, been a great addition.
So, and that's, that's it, tonight, yeah.
All right, with six minutes to, to ten o'clock.
Well, we can do this.
We are moving into board reports, so I'm gonna start off with Mr. Mignani, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make it real quick. Um, we are planning a, uh, a Halloween parade, uh, this year, uh, via COVID. I'm making contact with the school to, uh, utilize the, the, the Mende School, again, as we have in the past, so, uh, those are still being discussed and we're working on that. I would like to thank, uh, all the efforts, uh, for those who had put on the summer concerts, I may have mentioned it last year, real, um, last, the last meeting real quick. But again, kudos to Mike Duke for getting everything all done. And, uh, I just wanna wish everybody a, uh, a wonderful weekend. And I have to tell you, having a puppy is not an easy thing. I, 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 I'm, I'm telling you, I've lost sleep. And, yeah, I think I got a cold as a result of it, but anyway, long story short is, lover dearly, and, uh, we're not gonna get rid of her, and I may use her in the parade, I may put her in a carriage and have a wheel around, uh, wheel around.
You get a little puppy carrier and you can carry her on your front, there you go.
Oh, well, I have one of those too, believe.
There you go.
We're ready to rock and roll, and you only have four minutes, three minutes left, so I'll, I'll leave it at that and, uh, I'll be back physically at the next meeting, for sure.
Very good.
All right, thanks, Joe. Yolanda, go ahead.
Couple real quick things, um, so Metro West Conference for Women is an organization I've been working with. We're getting ready for our sixth conference on September fifteenth, so next week. There are still some tickets available, she'slocal.org backslash Metro West, if you're interested. Also, coming up here in town on September tenth is the car show over at Kid Fenwall. You can't miss the signs that are all over town. Uh, Area is having an event on September seventeenth. I don't have all the details, but I knew, do know they're having something at the corner spot. And just a reminder that school is open, and please be aware, when a bus is stopped and that sign is out, do not go past it from either direction. We have small streets and we wanna make sure our students stay safe, and that's all I got.
Okay, sounds good. Steve, you're next.
Thank you, Brandy, so just a couple things, uh, number one, the, uh, Saturday the tenth is the Ninth Annual Dragonfly Festival, one PM to six PM. This year, it's only located at the corner spot because of all the construction downtown. Next year, our tenth, we hope to make it bigger and bolder and more collaborative with the town, with the cultural council, with some other, uh, organizations as well, so we'll work on that. And hopefully, Mill Pond Park, the boardwalk, and the, uh, observation deck will be finished, uh, by next year, so we can, uh, we can utilize that as well. And then I just wanna acknowledge, uh, two appointments that we made tonight, Deb Conotan and, uh, Corinne Hickey to the Council on Aging, and I think that fills out their, their membership. And, uh, so, uh, it's, it's a really good group, I attend most of the meetings, and so welcome to, uh, to Deb and to Corinne. So, that's my tune.
All right, Rob, you're up.
Yeah, just quickly, uh, we talked a little briefly about this, the commuter rail subcommittee's meeting over the next week, and in addition, um, to the, the kinda issues we talked about, we're gonna get a presentation from Alastair Sawyers, the, he's the re- MBTA, uh, Director for Regional Rail and Rail Transformation. So I'm looking forward to see what they're figuring, I think regional rail has to do with the train going from Boston to Springfield, you know, through Ashland. And I think rail transformation has to do with the electrification of the line and the, and or the electrification of the locomotive, so. Be interesting to see what their, their thoughts are there, but, so that's coming up, and I'll report back on that. So that's it.
That's it, all right, I'm gonna be super quick, so tomorrow I'm going to the, um, the Ashland Antique Appraisal thing that's over at the bagel table, that, oh, real team, I'm excited. I have like things that I inherited from my grandparents that I'm like hoping to, hoping to make a million dollars, not kidding. But it's a, it's tomorrow. It's tomorrow from five to seven thirty, I think they still have a couple tickets if you wanted to get some stuff appraised, if not, come by, and it's gonna be a good time. It's a fundraiser for the Pumpkin Fest, um, through Student Council at the high school, 'cause they're doing this, this event in October. So, um, so come by and, and, um, watch me cry when I am told that. My antiques are not antiques. Big money, big money, not, probably not, not so much. Um, also this Saturday, uh, Simple Gesture's doing their, um, drive for the food pantry. They're looking for a couple drivers, if you, um, uh, want to, uh, help pick up, um, donations, uh, let me know, or you can go onto a Simple Gesture's website, I think it's at simplegesture slash dash ashland dot org is their website. Um, also, if you wanted to sign up to donate, um, they'll drop off a bag and you can fill it up, and it's once every two months, and it's a great way to, um, replenish our food pantry. And it's run by, um, a great group of high schoolers and, uh, a couple really dedicated parents. So, um, this Saturday is a Simple Gesture, and, um, that is, uh, pretty much it. The only other thing I wanted to say, just because I'm not doing it this year, 'cause it, it breaks my heart a little bit, but I can't take on any more commitments, is I did get an email from Ms. St. Cora, the, the principal of the high school, the schools are starting their, their request for parents to commit to, um, um, to site council, and I just wanna like put that out there for any parents. It's a really great way to know what's going on behind the scenes of your, of your kid's school, um, and get connected to administration and teachers and, um, and other parents. And it's a really easy lift, and it's a really great way to, to get involved, and it leads to other things, so. I'm just putting that out there, and, um, so if you have any inclination of getting involved in your kid's school, it's a good way to do it, and just put yourself out there and do it. So, that is it for me, um, and I think, oh, it's ten oh two, I wanted two minutes. Um, so, uh, unless there's anything else that anyone else wants to add, I will ask for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second?
Second?
Aye. That was me, second.
Now you gotta vote.
You gotta vote, Joe.
Aye. Anybody aye?
And Kinsman aye, and that passes, five zero, surprise, surprise. So at ten oh two, we are officially adjourned, our next meeting will be, uh, Wednesday, September twenty-first. Thank you to everybody who hung in there with us, Helen, you're, you're awesome, and you and Joan, uh, stuck in there till the end. So thank you very much for joining us tonight and for, um, for presenting to us too, so we appreciate that, so.
Good night.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good everyone, be safe.